Got a box. Jason.
I'm doing. Order the November tenth, twenty twenty five planning commission meeting. Here at the Robert Bassler Town Hall. Everyone's intended except for Paul. And we're excited to have everyone here. Are there any agenda modifications?
Think it would be more time to discuss the survey.
Okay.
Forty minutes.
So. I put the town plan update planning session after the presentation of the edited town survey. But some of the things I want to talk about. In the update session is like. What other questions we should add to the survey? So we could flip flop those. But that's I'm just throwing that out there. Or do you want to do? The survey and then talk about stuff?
Um, I spent. Mostly yesterday. And. This morning, working on the survey.
Okay.
Um, I'm not prepared to talk that much about the town plan, but I did reflect upon as I was doing the survey. I need to go back and read the town plan and. Recalibrate the survey with aspects that are in the plan. So I was popping through the plan as I was doing this. But. To answer your question succinctly, I'm prepared to discuss the survey. And knowing that with a provisor that we have to go back into the plan and do some additional calibration or. Adjustments. But I did not. I'm not prepared to do that in that and not do this.
What the town? Oh, no, totally didn't serve it. We're totally talking about the survey. I just wanted to.
Okay, let's start a little going over the survey as we have, which is pretty similar to. What it was before.
Should we approve minutes and do all that?
Yeah, we're gonna know. We're gonna get there. This is agenda modifications. I was asking if we could flip flop, talking about town plan and then survey.
Let's do survey town plan.
You want to survey town plan?
Yeah, that's my that's my proposal too.
All right, because we'll go through the survey and then I, like Michael saying, there's, I think, some big bigger topics that we need to add in from the town plan or from.
Yes.
Where, you know, what on?
Yes.
So so I think. We'll talk about the survey you guys have amended, then we'll do our planning session, right? And then we're gonna talk, we'll talk about the survey during our team plan.
Yeah.
Conversation. Does that make sense?
More kind of broad. Big picture changes.
Yeah.
So you guys work together and modify the survey?
We agreed to work together. But I did not respond to and did not see Andrew's email until days after he sent it. And I did not respond to him. Until this morning. So we did not collaborate as we probably should have.
Okay.
But we both worked on it. We both worked on it.
We've looked at each other's versions.
Yes.
I have, and you've, did you print them to bring them to the meeting?
Yes.
I printed both of yours to have a copy for myself, so I have one. Right, I don't.
So I don't have it.
So Friday will need a copy.
Great.
But let's, let's talk about the minutes really fast.
One second.
I moved that we approved the minutes.
Well, I've had the proposed change.
But you can't discuss that till we.
You moved that we.
It was second.
Okay, so it just have you, you say that we talk about them. I say, let's enter into discussion. Is that correct? That's what we're saying?
We have to have a first and a second. We have to have a motion and a second.
I second that we that we're gonna work on approving the minutes. And now we open it for discussion.
Yeah. Everyone.
Please.
Everyone.
I'm okay with the minutes, except for I sent an email to Jason this morning. And I think he sent out to everybody. Uh. The proposed edits.
Yeah.
And that's what I would like to have in there.
Okay. I see the approach to the proposed edits. Has everyone reviewed the proposed edits?
So I think then it's an amendment. I'd like to amend them. The minutes, so you have to make another motion.
I I make a motion to approve the amended minutes. Do I have a second?
Yeah. Second.
All right.
And the amended minutes means. The version I sent to Jason is included.
Yes. All favor.
I.
I.
The me the the minutes are.
So in reality, the minutes that we're getting, when it's that verbatim kind of stuff. Is not really what the minutes are supposed to be doing. It's supposed to be just giving us a gist. And then any action taken. On things. Like a gist of the conversation.
Mm hmm.
So then you wouldn't need to amend it if it said, you know, Michael said.
Did they?
Right, out of meeting on the first.
Yeah.
They didn't get the grant or whatever it says. Or I guess Paul said that. Um. This is what happened.
Yes.
And it doesn't. Then you don't have to clean up your ums, ahs, that kind of thing, right? So that's what we should be looking for in future minutes. In my.
I agree.
Have you ever, have you ever gone back in the mess to read them to figure out how things happened?
I have gone back through. Historical minutes to understand decisions. That were made. A decade ago or two decades ago.
It's, it's interesting. And so like. Sometimes it's nice to have more data, but like luckily for us now, all of our videos are cataloged and you can just watch the video of the actual meeting. So I think our minutes going forward, I think you're hitting the nail on the head. I totally a hundred percent agree with you.
It would be helpful. I think if. There was a. Title or something in our. Videos of things that were discussed, so it would make them easily searchable.
Yeah. I just know they exist. I don't know where they are.
In the video?
On YouTube.
What? They're on YouTube?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a town YouTube channel.
I hope.
Now, how do you do that?
I have not gone through, but I I I like the written versions.
Yeah.
I've gone into the to the town of the the files back there. And I've I've found some of the minutes of past meetings to be excellent. They not only talk about the topic, but they just they they summarize some of the rationale. Which is what I was trying to get across. That we should be including in our minutes.
Yes.
And um.
And not verbatim conversation.
I really wouldn't. Like if we had somebody did a minutes like that. One day we had somebody, yeah, she was excellent.
And so I think that's one of the things that we're gonna have to put forward. It shouldn't be from Jason. It should be from us, the town budget that we want.
Okay.
And. I think we should request. A minute taker.
I do too. Because. Um. I can't concentrate. And write. And enough. And then if I I know in the past when I would do it, I'd go home, it would take me hours to go back and do it. And I would rather my time be spent doing this. And I think we should have a minute table.
Okay.
That's my proposal.
Duly noted.
What do you think?
See how much it costs?
Yeah.
Hundred bucks a meeting.
You know, you can find somebody to do it for a hundred bucks.
And that's what he gets paid.
Oh, okay.
It's not bad.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
And she can do it for.
I didn't know there was someone.
I mean, we don't pay.
I know, but.
We do.
All right, let's let's keep um the general public comment. Is anyone from the general public here? No one's in general public presume. Awesome, move along. Presentation of edited town survey and discussion of the remainder of the document. I will yield the floor to Michael and Andrew.
This is my edit.
You have one of mine?
No.
Uh, you have one of mine?
I do. Yeah, the one where the red stuff is yours.
Yeah.
And um. Freddie, do you have mine?
No. Yeah.
And Langford, you have it.
Yes.
And now I'm gonna be a stick around one more thing. When we put out documents, can we have dates on them?
Hmm, sure.
Just because I had a lot of stuff printed that I was going through and.
Like scoop one eleven ten draft.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the way this worked is Andrew started. And gave me a version that was up to about. Oh, I don't know, was about question twenty or so.
Yeah, the person I sent you was right around there.
Yeah.
And those those edits were just based on what we talked about at last meeting.
Yeah.
Mostly.
And then I took them and worked on them. And didn't get it back to you before you continued working on the same version. So there's two versions. That are. Need to be synchronized. Now, what I can do, I volunteer. If you want me to, I can write the notes on this. And then fix the stuff in the the next version if you want. I'm I'm comfortable doing that.
So.
That's fine. I'm comfortable if we go through your draft. Together. One by one.
Just to be clear. This is the previous planning commissions survey, right? Which is just giving us ideas for questions. This is. We're not create like, these are just questions. We're deciding which ones we're gonna use and which ones we're not gonna use in our time, in our survey.
Yeah, some of them we got rid of completely, some of them we changed.
Yeah, but like, it's not like if it's not in here, we're not asking. I mean, this is, this is like.
All right.
This is the starting point. What we what we did last week, well, last meeting was go through. Instead of saying, yes, a good question. No, it's not. I don't understand the reason for that back and forth.
Yeah.
And then so we so we. As I stated, like three minutes, seven minutes ago. The survey is edited. And then we have to go through the plan. And identify areas we want more help in, understanding. The people's needs or wants. And then we then we can say, yeah, that in our survey or no, we need to add that to our survey. So yes, Langford, this is working off of. The last survey. With some thoughts that came through from the meeting last week is the last month and Andrew, my thoughts.
Cool. All right.
But we'll need to continue this after we town plan to see where areas we want include.
All right.
Do you have specific areas in the town plan that we should review that you think? Are not addressed?
I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Okay.
Um, I haven't.
You still say I don't recall.
It does. But um.
I I just don't know. I suspect there are. Areas. But I don't know.
Okay. Upset.
Oh, you're sorry.
Definitely. Yes.
What do I keep hearing spinning?
That's uh. I think some of it's the heater.
No, it's a stupid watch. I put everything else in vibrator. My stupid watches. Like being like this, I'm sorry.
The town, you gotta get, gotta get them lights.
No, it's the light somewhere. It's the cameras on my property and it's raining, so it keeps the influence.
Okay, so the way to do this probably. Is I got last year's last survey as it was never edited.
Mm hmm.
And then we have Andrew's. And my version, the first ten, twenty, the first twenty questions. Were ones that we had talked about last time and then we said, hey, we gotta clean them up a little bit, so. We can go to it. Okay?
Yeah, so what? Like.
So my proposal is. We go through question one. Um. It was a question we agreed to leave in last time and Andrew and I both did. Okay?
Okay.
Question two was how many people are in your family household? And we agreed. Um. I think what happened, I made an error. I like the way Andrew did it with, you know, the the age groups. So I should add the age groups to that.
Oh, because then that lets us get rid of another question further on in.
Hmm, I think Andrew's age groups is.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we got to something that really. Uh. We have some changes here. How many years have you lived in Faceton? Um, how many years have you lived in the Mad River Valley? Uh, if you lived and moved to face it, where did you move from? Um. Those are all questions that I don't really understand why we want to ask those. Um.
I didn't either, Michael, at our meeting. And I was thinking about it. And I think. The. The only. Way I can get my head around this is. Affordability. So as we look at, do we invest money in neck of the woods or affordable housing or any of those different things? There is some conversation that there are people who are coming here, say trust buys their house. They earn very little money. But they live in a home here. That they may own because the trust. I don't know how that works.
What trust?
A a family trust.
Oh, okay.
And if someone's coming here and buying a home. But then they're looking for affordable childcare or any other. Affordable help from the system. Do you figure it out from this? I don't know.
So if we could park that, Freddie, if you could make a note on two aspects. Affordability of housing. And affordability of childcare. I think I've got some questions. There are questions later on.
That might.
Yes. But if you don't mind, keep keeping those two points in mind.
Yep.
Um, so I. So I don't really think we need. On Andrew's section with the question three, four and five, Andrew already deleted four and five. And I deleted. Three, four and five.
Are you getting rid of how many years of it? Have you lived in facing?
I feel I why I feel that is divisive. And I don't understand what it has to do.
So.
With with our town plan.
So you're right now, we're working on the database of questions. It's gonna go into the electronic survey, right? You're gonna open up the survey and it's gonna say, do you live your full time? Do you live your part time?
Yes.
And then depending on that answer, it's gonna take you to another page. And then you're just gonna fill out some demographic information, right? So it's gonna go and how many years lived in facing? Doesn't matter. Keep going down, right? And then that's gonna drive you to another set of questions. And then on the back end, when we get a lot of engagement, we can say, I wanna see the, I wanna see answers to people who've been living in faces for twenty plus years. Get rid of anybody who hasn't lived here for twenty years. I wanna see the way they're answering the questions because. If we do what we plan to do to get this survey out to enough people where we have real data. That would be, I know it seems decisive, but it's. It's a way of just seeing where the perspectives, like the people who've lived here less than three years, what are their focuses? The people who've lived here longer and how do we make it work forever? Does it does that? You get what I'm saying?
It gives you a clue about the price point of their house too, and where they may fall on the affordability answer.
So.
I don't know. That was my thought about this whole.
It's like.
Thing.
This survey. That we're editing. Is clearly very targeted for like three or four items. If you've noticed, if you start looking through it. And like, so the people in this room, the planning commission, we all sort of, we have, we see things in a certain way. So when we create a survey. Our bias can sometimes be put into it. So I'd like to try to take as much bias out of the survey, but like. It talks about cell phone towers. It talks about um.
Uh. Energy.
Energy, how, you know, solar, wind, what do you wanna do with that? It talks about childcare, you know, like there's, they're clearly, we're trying to drive answers to specific questions. And we need to ask more questions. This, our town survey. If you look at what a survey is supposed to do, it's supposed to drive all parts of the town. It's help, it's supposed to help the select ward. It's supposed to help the conservation commission. It's supposed to help. The DRB. It's not just for the planning commission. So in our conversation, we're gonna have in the other part of the agenda tonight. I wanna talk about some of those things we wanna ask about that aren't in the only whops.
Right, and that the goals.
What are the goals?
Direct us towards that are not addressed.
So like, I can sit here and go through each question and read them individually, but I really just wanna talk about what is this survey? And like, what questions make no sense, you know? And.
Which I think that's Michael's.
That's what I'm, that's what we're working.
Going through the town plan.
I'm. I'm confused now. So because I thought we're gonna go through question by question.
We did that last week.
Well, we only got to the first twenty.
Yeah, we went to the first twenties last week.
And most of what we said was. There's condensing that needs to be done. We need to add some changes. And so I took notes last time on my version. And then Andrew and I went back and we've done that now. And we're trying to see if this looks right or not. So what my proposal is. We go through these two documents Andrew and I spend time on. And we pre we did homework.
Yes.
Review this.
Yes.
And I suggest we go through these. Question by question.
But but let's, but yes, yes, but we don't wanna do the exact same thing we did last week. So you just give us the presentation and we're gonna listen.
Well, why not? I thought what we wanna do is. Understand. And make sure that Andrew and I captured. The concepts of last time.
Okay.
Okay, so. If you you've made a point that you think. It's good to see. How people who have different levels of experience in the in faced and.
Mm hmm.
Answer a question. Fair enough.
Yeah.
Um, I am concerned it's divisive.
Okay.
Um, but I think you've made a point. And I'm willing to. To leave it in for now, okay?
Sure.
Um. Andrew had it in anyway, so I was like, I took it out. I'm happy to put it back in. Okay, so I'll put that back in.
Yeah.
It's like a hokey pokey.
How many years? Have you lived in the Mad River Valley? So. Would are we trying to get people chose to move out of waste field or someplace? I don't understand why we want that question. Andrew took it out. I took it out.
The only reason I can think that it would be in there is. Living in the valley. Versus moving here from somewhere else probably gives you. The perspective of someone who's lived here a long time. I don't know.
So. It's a simple question to answer. That just adds another data point, but I can make this argument about every single question. So I'm not trying to be redundant, but. Like, how many years have we faced in ten? How many of them about ten? I just told you that, you know, or, oh, I moved from Watesville five years ago.
I don't know, so. I think some of the comments that were we reported to the survey was it was too long. Or repetitious or whatever, we're trying to clean it up.
Yeah, no, I I.
So last time I said, take out four. I said, take out four. Anderson, take out four. It's out.
Okay, it's out of the it's out of the question pool.
And so is five.
Okay.
Okay. And then the next one is six. Uh, do you own a criminal? Were you a part time resident before becoming a full time resident? So we left that in.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Okay.
And that's how you worded it. I think that's better wording.
So what question are we on on your on where am I on yours?
We're 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 in parallel. Um, it's. I didn't number them always.
Because I have you going from, do you live in Faceton? How many people in your household? How would you characterize that they work? And then how much money do you make?
Yeah.
How long have you had a second home? Where do you live full time? I don't see where questions one through six are. Am I an Andrew?
Because because let me let me explain that they're done. Okay, because we said last time, we gotta condense. These questions about how many people work, how many people. Uh, work at various places, condense them into one and condense them. That's what we agreed to do.
Yes.
And Andrew came up with some 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 ways of doing it, but I made this table. I wanna explain this table then.
Okay.
It's right here. The table has the same things. And it's, it allows you in one question in one table to see what people do. So. Do you work at home? Do you work on the leftmost column? Do you work in person in MRV? Do you work in person outside the Mad River Valley? That's one set of questions and then. Volunteer. A lot of people do volunteer work here, which is important to note. You volunteer at home, do you volunteer in person, do you like in phone banks? Or do you volunteer outside of MRV? Now, are you a student? Are you retired? So for me, for example, if I go by here, I work at home, yeah, I put down them probably half part time and. Um, maybe a quarter time I volunteer in person and a quarter of the time I'm I'm retired. Okay, um.
I didn't know you were still working.
Oh, yeah, I bust my butt. I mean, how do I afford my life?
I thought you were retired.
Um, I do no longer work for Excel. Okay, but I have to have an even strength. I own a solar farm. Um, we got a forest that we're managing, when planted, you know, thousand. Acorns. Last couple of days. Um, I've got lumber, I got a sawmill, you know, so anyway, I the I my point is I'm still needing income. Okay, retired to me would, we can put a definition here. Retired is like when I used to go home and see my my uncles. Who retired from the steel mill, they're all wore out. Maybe watching TV and it said, Michael, can you go change the channel for me because I can't get up? So 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 then I think we need a table. If you guys want a table differently, but I mean, Andy, you work full time, right?
Yeah.
So you would put down work. Full time outside or wherever you work.
Outside.
There you go. So you'd be one there. Okay, your wife would be.
Same.
Same. Okay, so you got so you got two people there. And how many people you got? You got you got kids?
No.
So no kids. So get two there.
Kid?
No. My wife's due in January.
Oh, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. With 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 the utmost of due respect, right? So this is, we're talking about question database. The actual presentation of the questions is gonna be based on, we have to put this all into Google pages or Google docs and how we do it and radio buttons. So as far as like layout questions, like that's. Like this is the information we're trying to yield, right? How we do it, like this. This document is just literally the database, the 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 town, the the survey you were looking at, it's just the database, right? Like I created. A Google pages for it's a face in town survey where you answer this question and then it's either gonna take you. To it, you can't see my screen, but you know, I could share it on the TV, but basically. How we actually build the survey and the tables and everything, that's that's done like, because it's gonna be an electronic survey, right? That makes sense?
And the survey monkey let you do a table.
So.
I don't know that. I mean, those would be questions that we'll have to fair it out.
But I like the idea of this.
I do like the idea of this, but it's it's a question of how do we put it?
Format in the whatever app we use.
Yeah, I mean, at the moment, it used to be survey monkey. The survey monkey has some limitations, so. Google. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, has, yeah.
Like this is the Waterbury Town Plan Survey that they they issued last year. They got three hundred out of five thousand people to actually fill it out. It's ridiculous, but it's clearly a Google pages document.
So we're gonna have to go across people at. Um, farmer's market and stand outside Bisbee's and.
Town meeting.
And town meeting.
The hope is, the hope is we can get something going.
Engage that to do it.
A hope, the hope would be that we could actually put this together in the next two or three meetings and then we could have some information at town meeting because.
Can't we? Have more than one meeting a month?
Yeah, totally. And especially now, I'm running this meeting. Jason doesn't need to be here. We could be doing two meetings a month if that's what you guys wanna do.
I think we're gonna need to do two meetings a month if we're gonna get this ready. By March. You guys agree?
Yeah, but I'm kind of. I'm struggling with the work process here. I thought we're going through questions and we jumped to. Building a survey in some computer program.
Well, that's what we're doing. These are the.
I thought we'll go through questions.
But these are the questions that go into the service. So what I'm saying is with all due respect, I like your chart, but that might not work in the actual survey.
Oh, we can reform it.
Yeah, let's let's somebody else figure out the survey mechanics.
Okay.
I I thought the the remit. That I wrote down was take questions. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and put them all together.
Yep.
And um.[1645.86] Figure it out. I guess I I I did not put down unemployment, but I don't know if you're gonna put that down.
I don't think it's such a such a temporary item for most people.
Okay, so so that we just said no, okay, so I like.
Have you detected unemployment in the last four months?
Gives you an idea of what people are doing.
Yeah.
And I think that it's very important to get volunteer in there, because this, there's a lot of volunteer work being done.
But how does that affect? Our plans for Facein?
How does any of this affect our plans for Facein? I thought it was about like, are people traveling? Okay, are people driving? Because you'd work at home, you're not driving. If you worked in the Mad River Valley, you're locally. Uh. Driving, maybe walking if we get this Mad River path going.
Uh, like, I. I choose to volunteer on the planning commission, I choose to volunteer on the school board. You know, my wife chooses to be on the DRB, she's getting on the. O- open heart steering committee. These are the volunteer things we choose to do because we have the ability to do those things.
Yeah.
You know, where do I work outside the valley? Yeah. I mean, if you can do volun- do you do volunteer work? Yes or no? Does it matter where they volunteer? Is my question. What?
It was a matter where people work. Because a lot of people volunteering is their job.
Yes, because the question of where people work has a direct impact on. Like, do they need childcare? Uh, because people have to work to make the money, you have to make an income to to live here. I, let's keep moving, I'm s- I'm sorry, I don't I don't want to get.
I think it's as relevant as the work question. I mean, you're, it's driving on the roads to volunteer, driving on the roads for whatever.
Um, and then. The next question, how many people get the thing? So basically, Andrew, you you see, what I've taken is the questions. From their five. From your question five. To question. Thirteen and put them that table. Is what I did.
Yeah.
You see that?
Yeah.
So you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, then we went to the income one, um, I got roundly defeated last week. Last time, so I just added the prefer not to answer.
Yeah, and that's.
Okay.
But these are the same scales of wedge form?
We added uh up to five hundred, two fifty to five hundred and five hundred above.
I think that's.
And then the prefer not to answer.
So it's so it's always ten to twenty, twenty forty, forty to seventy-five, seventy-five to a hundred, a hundred to two fifty. Over two fifty, but now we've added two fifty, five hundred over five hundred for not to answer. That's fair, that's totally fine. I just, I think it's a little redundant, I mean.
What's redundant?
The ten is wanting.
Okay, so we can go.
I know, I I just, I I.
Zero to twenty?
Yeah, we can go zero to twenty.
Or is it zero to forty? You're like, yeah, I don't.
I think there's a difference there.
Yeah. Oh, no, I I I don't feel, I just, yeah. That sounds.
So zero to twenty, less than twenty, right?
Yeah. Yes, like less than. Ten. I I don't know how you look at this.
You have other.
Means, well, that's annual household income. Oh, you're saying like.
Maybe, well.
I think anyone who has like, who's like living off of the interest of their trust fund, like.
That's their income.
That's income. Okay, anyone who's like. It doesn't, I like, yeah, really, sorry.
That's.
Less than one. And then we go to part-time residents. And I think Andrew and I are the same all the way through. Um, you're an an eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and mine fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. I'll fix the numbers. Yeah, we're the same though. Right, Andrew?
Yeah.
Okay, and we go to eighteen, you're fourteen. You plan to move here, do you plan to retire here? I just made that into another one of these tables. Do you plan to move here full-time while working, retire here? Yes, no, if not, why not? I think why not is a very important answer. Okay. Andrew did?
Yep.
And then we go to um all residents from environment care and services. Again, um, I didn't really take out. The stuff so much as I just made it into a table.
When I was thinking on that, I must just take out and just have less options, just have environment, community, public services.
Let's see, but uh.
Oh, you're talking about question nineteen?
Old nineteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Old nineteen, where it's rural character, scenic beauty, transportation, natural resources, recreation opportunities, sense of community, small population. Um.
I see your point, yeah.
You see redundancy in some of those?
Well, that's.
It's not, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
That is.
If you were trying to drive people to answer, to push an agenda. Would, no, like, I'm, that's a serious question, there's no sarcasm there, like.
No, because that is a big thing that happens with surveys.
Yeah, so like, if you look at these options, right? Rural character, scenic beauty. And good sense of community, I mean, they're all basically, they're, it's the same thing, so if you're asking for me to tell you the three that I like. It's gonna push me to like, don't de- don't develop, like, keep it the same way it is. Or maybe I don't.
I, yeah, I mean, that's, I I just had environment, community, public services.
Environment, community, public services is the.
Three that I would put there instead of the one. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Or ones other.
So you're you're saying is, of these three things, which do you value most to the least? Because you're asking for three answers and you're giving them three options.
Or you could put other two, so.
You could put other, and I think you could separate school out. Because I think our school situation is. Pretty um tumultuous right now.
I think that needs to have its own section later on, probably.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we're gonna talk about, yeah, I want to talk about school.
That was one of the, yeah.
Like, there's, there's, there's huge, there's like, it's like, these people focus on cell towers, childcare. And something else, right?
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals, like, ADUs, they talked about ADUs, do you want an ADU, do you not want an ADU, like. Oh, great, like, you know what? On Wednesday, ADUs may or may not be a lot easier, it's like, you know. We need to focus on, we need to focus on like six or seven, eight different things in our survey. Not just the, anyway, continue.
So I kind of thought environment could cover the the character, the beauty, the natural resources, community was in. You know, covering the small population.
Personal safety.
Personal safety and public services with school and local government.
Yes, we can certainly say rural character, scenic beauty, natural resources, that's all environment, right? Natural environment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can say natural one, yeah.
I a hundred percent agree with what Andrew's saying, if we change this question from giving ten options to, hey, these are the three things. Which ones do you value the most? And then you can write an other, and then in our survey results, we'll just have a bunch of other, where people wrote something in. And then we can look at them and be like, oh, that's really environment, or oh, that's really community.
Or that's something we didn't consider and we should, yeah.
So we'd have natural environment. And then what are the other ones?
Community, public services.
Because environment, community, public.
Community. It's the small population, the personal family safety.
Okay.
And then the and the sense of community, neighbors question.
Okay, so it's. Okay, so.
So what happens if you get a crummy neighbor?
Leave Facein. You don't live here.
Get right on.
Yeah.
And so we have immunity. Recreation opportunities.
Oh, I think I was keeping that, actually, so.
Keep it, keep it, yeah.
Oh, different, sorry. Recreation.
Opportunities was a fourth.
Yeah, keep it.
That's a lot of power.
It's a big reason why people move here.
Yeah.
So what do you believe are Facein's three greatest assets? Environment, community, public services, recreational opportunities, or other? That's fair. Yeah. It's very fair.
So.
I think that's a big improvement.
It's a huge improvement. That question was like. Word salad before.
So just to make sure I got this right, it's environment, natural environment, recreation opportunities, community, public services. And schools, what what?
Other.
Other.
Not schools.
Schools is public services.
Yeah, and we'll have schools have its own section later.
Okay.
Right. I love how, I don't know how anyone knows how over the past five years, so the gr- rate rate of growth of Facein has been.
Are you good with that, Mike, on that?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 I I I I'm just gonna put them into my table.
Okay. Like, if you said something like, based on the fact that the town of Facein has issued four hundred and seventy-six building permits in twenty twenty-five. The rate of growth in Facein has been, you know, that's not a real number, but.
I I was gonna say, holy cow.
No, I mean, it's like Jason's, like, there hasn't been a DRV meeting in four months. Yeah, because there's been no permits put in that require DRV approval, there's no been no conditional use approval. He's been issuing building permits, you can see them as you drive around town, they're hanging in the main hall out there. I mean, he issued one to me, like, you know. There are permits that are being issued, but. Anyway, the question is, over the past five years, the rate of growth in Facein has been.
So my only question on that was. Is growth, do people know what we're talking about? Are we talking about population or development?
I think your point is very valid, both of you. We need to find out how many building permits were issued last five years and how many subdivisions were built.
Oh. Oh, so it's like, give people information and ask their opinion of the data?
Yes.
I like that.
What if we put a. Chart in there? And then the question.
Yeah.
So you could say, and five years' worth of data, as many permits were issued.
Yeah. And do you think this is too slow, about right, or too fast?
Okay.
But permits don't mean growth, I mean, you can have a permit for a renovation, it doesn't change your use or your.
Oh, get new construction. Yeah.
Uh, new, new. Uh, home.
New CO.
Because we don't care if it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if they got a CEO.
Well, no, like, yeah, that's, everyone has to get a CEO at the end of the building.
New CEOs and subdivisions. I'm right, I'm just worried that someone's gonna look at that and say, whoa, Facein had. This much going on. It's not actually that much going on, or, you know, either way.
Well. I I just.
Right.
Pond, you know.
I want to make it clear that, like, in this homework session, we're talking about it, we're saying, hey, we need to bring some empirical data to this question. What exact data we give them is is what we're gonna refine that, fair?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, is it building permits?
Right, but having some agreement around the table gives us an idea of where we're headed.
Yeah.
Certificate of occupancy and subdivisions. Those are two I heard. Yes, no?
No, I I think. I think.
But I mean, just to play the double act, you should say like, land conserve too or something. Or, you know, trails growth or.
Oh.
At one point, I was looking at the listers data of how many houses transferred in twenty twenty or tw- each month of twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, just to see like where things were happening. And.
Purchases.
Purchases, and like. One of the biggest things, not to get on his side, one of the biggest things I hope to learn. From this survey is the statistic in the town plan we had before is forty percent of homes are lived in year-round. And sixty percent are second homeowners, and I'm really curious to see.
Is it still there?
Because that was before COVID, that was before twenty twenty, and like, so we've had people in move town, we've had people that have left. And you can see that in the enrollment data for schools. Which I looked at at the last meeting, uh, at the school board meeting. But it's it was gonna be interesting to see what our occupancy rate really is.
The question one, do you live in Facein full-time or part-time? But to get to the essence of your que- of your.
Yeah, the statistic from the last survey was forty percent of homes are lived in full-time and sixty percent are second homes. That statistic is gonna, we're gonna get a new number after this survey.
Yeah, it'd be very interesting. I think it's very important.
It's incredibly important.
I I have anecdotal evidence of my answer, but it's. We'll record it, so I can't really say goodbye.
Okay. Um.
So twenty, we're gonna add some context for this, I guess, whatever we add can be for this whole section.
Yeah.
Because some bits on conservation too.
Development and conservation, so in development and conservation, we're gonna share share some empirical data, which we're gonna have to gather. On building permits, certificate of occupancy, number of acres that have gone into conservation trusts. Uh, the number of acres that are currently in current use, not continued use, current use, current use. Um. And that's gonna, that's gonna be a bit of a data mine to get all that information.
I bet Jason has a lot of that readily available.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna get it. But it's.
So, so.
Maybe the conservation.
So wait a second, wait a second. I've written some things down, it said subdivisions, new COs. Number of acres of land conserved in the last five years.
Into conservation trusts. Number of acres that have been put in conservation trusts.
Well.
That's the term, right?
Just say conserve.
Serve.
Conserve, because their land is conserved, it's not necessarily a trust.
So conservation trust, like, what's happening with the eleven hundred acres around Mad River? One way or another, some of us have conservation trusts, you you. Get rid of the development rights forever.
That's not necessarily true.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's a.
You've got.
Time bid.
You've got to read. The legal document. For each property and the deed.
Okay.
I have knowledge. Of conserved property. That was put in very, very. Detailed conservation, it was twelve pages. Of information.
Yes.
And it was given to an entity as part of um, that the person could live on the property until the. Um. As she, does this this person passed away, and then the entity that was given the the conservation rights to it would inherit it.
Mm-hmm.
The penultimate paragraph of this twelve pages said, although. Um. In in spite, it would, in spite of all the foregoing. The person who owned the property recognizes this document is written for perpetuity in her per- perpetuity, and there may be. Opportunities in the future where circumstances may change, and that some of these, these, these. Clauses may need to be altered.
There.
The person died.
Yeah.
In one month. And within a month. A paper was filed in the clerk's office rescinding all the requirements and allowing development.
It's a time bit.
Pardon?
It's a time bit is what a lot of.
So some do, some of the properties, like I I know Vermont Land Trust. Has a little bit stricter. Um, requirements on the conservation. But there are, and I I know there's lands that are conserved. That are at the be holder of the landowner. Still. Okay, so.
But.
Sometimes the DRB will put on requirements to conserve land. I know the DRB will say, hey, look. You can develop this, but you need to set aside half of this for conservation.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be a tricky find. Um, I think in in it 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 sounds good, if land conserve, but. How it's conserved, the devil's initiative.
But let's just focus on like, people's best intentions. I understand that behind the doors, people are doing bad things, but like, ultimately. People are putting things, like, how many acres have been put in a conservation?
That's good.
In the last five years.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether or not that's gonna fall apart fifteen years down the road. It's just sort of, where's the talent?
Agreed, and I think you want to know number of acres that were put in current use or are in current use.
Are in current use because like, for example, like, my property's in current use, there's other properties that are being placed in current use, things, if the, if you want to build something, you have to. If you want to get out of current use, you have to pay ten percent of the market value in a one-time fee to get out of current use, so it's like. How much stuff is coming out of concurrent use? To get developed, because current use property is being forested, is good for the animals, you you understand.
I I understand fully, but my 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 question to you is. We said for last five years, we're gonna get the number of subdivisions, we're gonna get the number of uh certificates of occupancies. And do we want to find the number of additional acres that are put in current use? Because that, we're looking at. The rate of growth over the last five years.
Well, if I put a chart in front of you that said the number of acres in current use in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and just put a bar graph, so you can just see it. And then you can see which way it was trending. I would think we're getting into the weeds on this one. But.
You could just do it, you could say twenty twenty, and then you could say this many more acres were added, blah, 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 in that chart.
How, yeah, I mean, I think that.
Well, yeah, we'll figure that out, we'll get that data, how it should be best displayed.
Yeah.
Fair?
Um, I'm s- I'm struggling, I'm sorry. I mean. This is, this is the chart that I would love to know.
About?
The. The parcelization. Only the table is. But the number of parcels in Facein by size. That would be very good to know.
You want to know how many are two hundred acres plus, how many are a hundred, a hundred fifty, how many?
Yeah, and how that changed over time.
Okay. I mean, that's just. Okay, I mean, that's just. Data mine, that's just.
Because that would then say, are we, are we meeting the essence of this chapter three? Which is um. No, I forget where it is, but yeah. Um, average side, there's someplace there's a table in here. Or maybe it may, it may have been in the Mad River. Um, that Sam Robinson presented, but there was a chart that showed the parcelization. I think that's what we need to know.
Okay. Um, but do you need question twenty ones?
I think we can, we can have it as a precursor, that we could do the parcelization over and find your increments.
Okay.
Change in parcels numbers. Sizes over time. I think that'd be very useful to know.
But does the public? You think that that would inform their decision on how they think? That growth is affecting them or? Their opinion of if it's too fast, too slow, just right?
Yeah, because if you look here in our plan, there is this parcelization table, okay? And. People came here for a reason. And do they feel with the growth of based in, and you can show them that we went from.
Say twelve hundred parcels.
Yeah.
And now.
Two thousand.
Yeah.
And they can then show that there are smaller sizes and stuff, and is that consistent with what people want here or not? Because that talks about this whole chapter three, about habitat, habitat sizes and. Like there's mass stands and the sizes and stuff and that's. Is that valuable to people or not?
I think it could be a little misleading too.
How so?
More parcels doesn't necessarily mean less large chunks of habitat. I mean, if the parcels are all concentrated in, well, in the right area. It actually could open up more large.
What you could say then, if you have. Parcels of. Five hundred, two thousand five hundred acres, if that hasn't changed, that'll end, that'll support. And then if we see that the tier. Three, which is one to nineteen acres. If that has. Doubled in tier three, twenty to ninety to a hundred acres. Has decreased, then it says, okay, those, that would address the fact that what you're saying, the smaller part, parcels are being subdivided.
Yeah, if we can be that specific, it's useful, if we're just dividing the. Area by the number of parcels.
I think it'd be nice to know size of parcels.
Yeah.
And I, I think there's a way to do that, through the grand list. I think that'd be very useful.
Yeah, I was gonna say Doug might be able to pull that information.
Be nice to know, like, in twenty twenty five. This is how many we had in these different sizes. And in twenty two thousand, we had this in nineteen sixty or whatever, how far the database goes, this is what we had.
What, what is that, where did you see that, since three dot what?
Uh, that is on page thirty of the town plan.
But I think this is great, I think, I think it's great, I think getting information is great, I think getting information to the people is great, so you get a better understanding what they want. So this is just a document. Produced by the. Patterns of development for the main environmental protections project in July of nineteen ninety seven. And it talks about the impacts of forest fragmentation on wildlife species, okay?
Yeah, but there was a table, I, I, I remember seeing a chart, and it may have been in Sam Robinson's. Um, state of the matter of revolting presentation, that there was parcels, yeah, can I see that please? Cause I was real struck by that.
That was. That meeting was, they had that, okay.
I just handed him the document.
Um, I'll tell you what, rather than wasting everybody's time, how about if I look at that later, should continue this charting? Just to be this here Friday, you know. So then, we went to. The question.
So question twenty was, how do you feel about the growth? Question twenty one is, how is the character faced with affected by the recent development, which is the same question, right?
Yeah, we can probably combine those into another table. If we're intelligent, yeah.
Okay.
And then. We have. The next question twenty two. Which is seven, it's the old twenty two, yeah, it's the same as the old twenty two.
So it was not at all important, somewhat important, extremely important, with dots in the middle, and then. We're gonna add kindas, but then you guys just chopped out the middle button, so it's just. Not at all somewhat and varied.
Yeah.
With all the exact same stuff.
Yeah.
Which makes sense, because why do those other buttons even exist?
Yeah.
Should we add forests?
Forests?
Yep, to that.
Yeah, if we have forests.
Okay. And like, just for the data part, should we, um, some of these other ones too, should we do like a number scale, one to three? So you can like.
What?
Get an average, like one being not important, two being somewhat important, three being. Very important.
As far as when the data comes out the back.
See, get an average and play with the numbers.
Oh yeah, we can value the not important, somewhat important, very important in the back end.
Okay.
Yeah. And you wanna ask preserve forests?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's something not addressed there specifically.
Yep.
Just forests.
Oh, yeah. Quite a lot of other stuff there.
Okay.
And looking at this now, I'm kinda like thinking of just keeping all balanced, it seems like we should have a chart like. Do you, how much do you value affordable housing, people being able to live near they work? You know, stuff like that. Heavy on the preserving there.
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd love to.
I mean, the next one kinda does, but.
Yeah, I. This is just, these are just questions we might add to our town, to our survey.
So you're suggesting at the town. Build affordable housing, you're saying?
Not build, just how important is it to? Have all types of housing, have affordable housing, have the ability to live near where you work.
Yeah, so there's, they got, they did hit affordable housing later on in their survey.
And I did too, I.
And I think, I think that they go into housing, which is another section.
Yeah.
And that starts in question twenty nine.
Yeah.
Andrew's trying to balance it, right, this to that where.
I mean, cause you're gonna, we're gonna get answers for this, and we're gonna say, oh, we really need to preserve a lot of stuff. And then, what, you know, but if, if there's no other questions.
Maybe that gets added, I know we're trying to shorten it, but.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry.
If you feel like we need to preserve all this. And you think we need this. I mean, how, you can't have it all.
No, totally get that, you know, I.
I mean, how do you ask that question and have? Um, cause people do a lot from emotion, and that's not helpful.
I think, I think that we sort of put the cart before the horse, that we're talking, we're talking about a survey in fine detail. Before we've had the conversation about what our real goals are. And I'm trying to respect Michael and Andrew's time right now, as we sit here and go through these questions, but I really would like to just talk about. What are we trying to do here as a larger picture? And that's why I was gonna switch the agendas, but I'm, I'm happy to talk about these questions, but I would like to talk about our larger plan tonight if we. I wanna make sure that that time exists. If that's okay.
What we should have done then is we should have said. At the last meeting. Park the survey cover. And then everybody reads the document. Unfortunately, we didn't say that.
No.
We assigned homework.
Yeah.
And there are individuals in this group who volunteered their time.
Yeah.
To do that homework.
I know.
And so we have to respect.
So.
So let's finish this conversation about the survey. And maybe for the next meeting, we say we're gonna look at sections, blah, blah, blah. Let's really study them, and if we had our briefing maps. That would be helpful.
Yes. I think what we need to do, like, I think we need to. We need to create the skeleton of a survey and then start pushing the questions into the survey and putting it up on the screen and looking at the survey. And directing where we're going when we're doing survey work, these are great questions, this is the stuff we wanna get, but. This is not the way it's gonna be presented to townspeople at face and in this paper form, you know? It's gonna be on the computer. But well, let's continue going through this.
Okay, number twenty three, the old twenty three.
The old twenty three.
Was the dinner policy. Should the town?
Yeah, yeah, so let's see what I've done in my chart, I think Andrew, you had.
It's Andrew's twenty.
Andrew is. Is a.
I made a chart.
Uh, yeah, Andrew's twenty and, which is kind of what it was.
Yeah, I think I loved it.
And, and I, I kinda made this little chart too.
Uh, I'm fine with the chart.
Yeah, chart looks great.
Is it, where, where'd you get fifteen hundred feet for the?
Oh, okay, I, I, I. Placehold, don't we have something in the town, is it fifteen hundred or is it seventeen hundred?
Seventeen.
I wasn't sure.
I thought fifteen seemed a little low.
So I think we need to put that number in, in, in a, in a question mark, but I think there's a, somewhere there's something about. Okay, not developing up on the ridge lines. Alright, I just don't know what it is.
Yeah.
You know, Freddy?
Not off the top of my head, but I believe it is seventeen hundred, it might be even.
Oh, the statistic of, of where the reserve district starts?
Uh, whatever previous rule we have, I would just say match it.
Yes. It might have been, yeah, I don't know, I gotta.
Oh, and you added other please specify, that was what I had on my list to add. Those questions.
Um, yeah, I guess I need to add, add that, yeah. Other. Please specify. Okay, that's for twenty three. And then twenty four. Yeah. So here's what I did on here. Um, there, there are twenty four. Had some areas of the time. And I guess you just copied the same, Andrew, right? I actually went to the map. And I looked and I tried to get all the areas to put all the areas in, in, and I. My first attempt, but I think this basically covers the town. There could be, you could break it out a little bit more if you want. But I was trying to get, where do people want this type of development? Yeah.
Um, I like the areas, I was gonna say, combine the two middle ones, the single family and duplex. Cause those are more or less the same now.
Uh, we had a long conversation about.
Which question, twenty four?
How can duplex be the same as single family?
State statute, I mean, it, it, if you can build a single family, you can build a duplex, yeah.
That's news to me, where's that?
Act one eighty one, right?
You are not wrong, sir.
It might be conditional, but it's.
Yeah. In the rural, I spend most of my time in the rural residential district, to be honest. Cause that's where most of our town is. Rural residential. Do I have any multifamily or single family only?
Michael, on your twenty four, I was confused by what you mean by rural versus single family residential.
Yeah, let me, I, I'm trying to understand this act one eighty one, but that's news to me.
So, I mean, in residential districts, allow, it allows duplexes where single family homes are allowed.
Where?
Um, section. I'm on a slide that's.
There were tiers.
I know the difference between a duplex and a multifamily house or two family house, but they're basically the same.
No.
What's the difference between a two family house?
That is, that, I would agree.
Okay.
It's the, as soon as you get the third one, it becomes um, a multi family.
Yeah, yeah.
Over three.
Oh, I thought it was at three.
I think it's over three.
I can't speak to that. Um, but so like, an eight, it's a, a building that has an ADU in it. Is a, is a single family residence and ADU if this one is, is owner occupied, which is the definition we need to come up with. Once it's not owner occupied, it becomes either duplex or a two family home.
This, this, this is the whole. This is the thing that I was very worried about, we started having the conversation ADUs two years ago.
Okay.
I think this is the back door to putting in duplexes and single family housing.
What's wrong with that?
By double the population?
Is that what I'm trying to do? I mean, and you're gonna do it with using up less land?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, I'm, I'm, if I'm correct me if I'm wrong, but you just don't want people to continue to parcellize. Cut down more trees to build more houses, so if someone expands their house to house more people, so we have a housing crisis, but they don't. Disturb the soils, isn't that better?
So we want more people here.
I did.
Okay, I want more people to be able to live here. We have a lot of homes. They're not occupied, right? I don't want people to buy pieces of property just to rip down all the trees to build a home. When there's all these empty homes, I want people to be able to develop so we can have, if they're willing to make a two family home. We have a housing problem.
I think we have bigger philosophical differences.
Yeah, we have a housing affordability problem that's caused by other things.
Which we're gonna talk about. I'd love to know what those other things are.
Costs.
No, but that's like, that's the conversation that we need to have before we put out this survey, because we have to figure out what's driving that. What do people care about, what questions do we ask to try to figure that out, and what are people willing to, to, to? Let the people of face and do to try to solve that problem, cause if we don't solve that problem, we're just gonna, it's gonna continue to get worse and worse. And that's what our survey is. Is like, where's the town going? What are people willing to, to let us do, not us, you know?
The town.
The town. And how?
What do you want the town to?
Is the bill.
Yeah.
I, I was very, I, 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 I thought you could have tiers.
That's, that's.
And I thought there were tiers that you would, that you as a planning commission could go and change from tier one, tier two, tier three. I forget where that was. But.
This is S one thing I'm talking about.
But Nikki came.
Yeah.
Yeah, that act two fifty is separate, this is just another housing bill.
So, I am, this would be. I'm not aware that, that the law has changed. It says, single family homes zoning needs to be changed to allow duplexes.
Is that the whole, is that the home act? That caused our whole ADU strife and why we had to change everything?
Did that pass?
Yeah, this is two years ago.
I mean, this is like, this is.
Yeah.
Every single person on this planning commission brings something else to the table, and this is your wheelhouse, right, like knowing this stuff from.
Much with duplexes, but. Yeah.
But you understand it.
Anyways, I think we're against. Stuck then for a while here and that.
Can we just, I, I'd like to.
Well, we're gonna have to have these conversations at some point, I mean.
I know, but I. Unfortunately. You guys did a lot of work revamping this, but it's, it's, it's sort of, and it's great, and there's charts, and it's great. But they're not in. A survey that I could send to someone to take, you know?
But, yeah, but we're still gonna have to go through this process.
No, I know, and there's, so we have to figure out what questions we wanna have, what questions we don't wanna have, and like, these are, some of these questions are great, and this is the work that the other people did. And let's see, we switched.
So you're saying now, all of our single family zoning is now allowing duplexes.
Which can, if we, you have to go in front of the DRB to get a permit to turn into a multifamily or duplex. You do not need to pull a permit to build an EDU. Um, you can, well, you need to pull a permit, you don't have to go to the, sorry, you don't have to go to the DRB to build maybe.
As long as it meets those criteria, I still think this question should have, what do people want? Okay, I hear what Andrew wants. You've heard what I want.
Which question?
Uh, was twenty.
Twenty four.
Twenty four. What are the types of new residents available, would you like to see in each of the following map nine?
Pardon?
But my question was, it says rural, single family residential, duplex residential, multifamily, what does the rural mean?
Uh, rural means like farms, like there's. It's, it's not. It's large tracts of land, I guess.
Conservation or something, or conserve land or?
What type of new?
None of those roads are gonna have conserve, but they're, they're gonna have some conserve land behind them. Okay, so you drive up like, you drive up North Facet Road right now. Okay, up the paved area. And I would characterize that as a mixture of single family residential, maybe, maybe a duplex or two here and there. But mostly rural, there's nothing new. Open land. Most of the way up North State Facet.
So.
I, I guess I need some.
What type of new residential development would you like to see?
Yeah.
You could say none.
None probably be better.
Yeah, not rural, no.
Yeah, none will be better, you're right. Yeah.
And if I had it my way, I would just have the none and then single family slash duplex. To have the none and then single family slash duplex and then multifamily.
I understand.
Yeah.
And I think I'd like to know what everybody else thinks. Too.
I just think that technically now it's closer to those two things being the same than having separate, cause. Yeah, once you get above three, or maybe it's three, you're gonna look, but then it's multifamily. But.
So this is like. The NIMBY question, like. I don't want people developing near me. I want people developing near you. Like what is what is the data set we're getting from this question? Where people think?
Trying to look at, we're trying to look at zoning, right? So what I was trying to get at with this question, or I thought we were trying to get at is. You talked about changing some of the zoning.
Yeah, would you be opposed to changing the zoning from one acre to one half acre in the area? Of 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 surrounding North Face and Road? Yes or no?
So but maybe that's what it needs, cause maybe that's how the question should be where would you be in favor? Of changing the zoning.
In these areas.
In these areas to allow.
Reduce.
Yeah.
Or to allow smaller, less than one acre parcels.
Yeah. And the reason I say that is because. A towns person said to me, I'd like to see a reduced minimum lot size along North Facetown. So then I bring that to the planning commission. That's not necessarily how I feel, and I say, hey, guys, somebody said. Maybe we should look at that, you know, and that's what we're gonna get. You know.
And I wonder. How you restrict that by by road? It would have to be rural residential. Forest reserve, whatever. It can't be a specific road.
So like, uh, so we're the, we're supposed to be the people that know stuff, right? So someone says, hey, maybe you should talk about reducing minimum lot size. In specific areas of town. And then as the planning commission, we say, okay, these are existing L U Rs. This is where we could change the L U Rs. Um, these are the areas where we know. You know, we don't have steep slopes. There's, you know, there's good facilities. It's it there's, you know, people can put septic in, so like. These are the areas we just know empirically, we know that these areas work. So why don't we propose to the town like, hey, what do you think about doing this over here? And then they say yes. And then we put that in our in our revisions list for the next.
So you're saying you would take North Facetown though, for example, and revise it to a different. Rural residential, it would be. Whatever that other.
The north, you know.
North Facetown Development Zone.
I understand that like. It's it's an idea. How it's gonna act like the nitty-gritty of how we actually do that is 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 something we'd have to.
I I think I think your question is good. It should be something like, what type of zoning should we have for each of the following areas?
But they don't know, they don't like, the thing is, they don't understand that.
Well, that's why we have single-family residential, duplex, residential, multifamily.
I think we'd have to say something about the lot size because we're not. Uh, about increasing the density.
Where do you want to increase density?
Yeah. You have to, you have to bring it down to the lowest common denominator, like, hey. What do you think about this?
So how would you word the question? I made a proposal. Which. I didn't. Give as much support.
Um, how do you feel about reducing? Or allowing building on smaller than one acre parcels? To increase density in these areas.
Currently in. Seventy percent of the town of Facetown is a rural residential district and the minimum lot size is one acre. What would you think of a proposal of reducing the minimum lot size in? The areas, it'd be in North Facetown between the town office and Smith Road, you know? You know, like some, I'm just throwing, you know. Like giving areas around town where we reduce the minimum lot size to allow people to. Take their one acre lot and sell half of it to someone else.
Yeah, I think from here to theirs. I mean, you've got water.
I was just, it was just, it was just work. It wasn't.
Yeah, okay.
What I'm saying is, as a planning commission, we need to look around and be like, where are the areas where we can do that? Like, like your maps, right? Cause we know these things. And then we'd make a proposal to the townspeople and the townspeople say, yes, we like that idea. You know, a lot of airport road where you live. You know. That you could, you mean, you have rather a large lot, right?
Five acres.
Yeah. I mean.
But it's steep.
No, I, well, part of it's actually pretty flat along the along Airport Road to Kerry Strong.
Yours is your five acres?
Yeah.
But if you had a streamlined.
Very strong.
But if, but if the L U R is allowed, you have a streamlined subdivision process where it's pretty much just like. You submit a piece of paper and you can subdivide into two, two, two and a half acre lots, as long as you can get state septic. You may or may not decide to do that. And then you'd have a neighbor.
Yeah. So why don't we say, which areas do you think could support more density?
We also gotta worry about septic systems.
Yeah, but that's.
I mean, that's, I mean, there's setbacks, septic, there.
There's a lot of.
Steep slopes.
Yeah, what about runoff? I mean, you know. You think about. All those roofs, you think about that is a much greater. Runoff situation managing that that water.
Yeah, you'd have to, I think from an engineering point. You could have. Retention ponds. Okay, and dry sumps, dry wells. That would allow the um, the rainfall to go there. Uh, if you could get the septics to fit.
I think, I think.
Might be, it might be tough to get. Septics to perk. In that density, but what we could ask is. Where do people want to have some more zoning? Then we worry about the septics and the other stuff later. Just make sure it's covered in our land just regulations.
Yeah, you can't pull a building permit um.
Early mo- most of the land along many facing roads are zoned for one acre lots.
Yes.
Which of the following areas would you be in favor of? Changing the zoning to allow.
Half acre.
Half acre lots.
Please check next to where you actually live. If you're answering this question, we also need to know which area, if you live in any of these areas. Okay. Areas where zoning should be changed, is that question twenty five?
Uh, it's twenty four, twenty five, yeah, yes. Yeah, I um. They they need to be combined. I think we're doing combining twenty four instead of where new should you'd like. Would change the zoning. Currently, most of the land along many facing roads are zone for one acre. Which of these areas? Would you support changing the zoning to half acre lots? To allow half acre lots, correct?
That's, yeah, that's just one possible scenario.
What else would you want to do?
I mean, you could go to quarter acre. I I, you know, I I think we have districts struggling without quarter acre.
Get quarter acre septic, septic system. In a well. You got setbacks, wells and.
Yeah, I. I'm agreeing to the idea of the question, but I. Would have to spend more time on the phrasing.
Wow, so how about which of these areas would you support reduced lot size zoning?
Yeah.
To allow increased density.
Uh, yeah. I don't know if that's the, yeah.
You don't know what?
I don't know if that's the best way to fix our problem, but yeah, that is one possible idea. I wish I knew the answers.
I think, I think the answer is.
What do you mean? Questions of like how to fix the housing problem?
I think, I think it's the growth in certain developing areas. I mean, Irisville is trying to do it and and Waze Field. And I I don't understand to be honest with you, why Facetown is independent from. Waze Field. I don't understand that. As as a governing entity. I mean, it's really, we should be the man who are valley. And I think there should be growth. In. Defined areas. That you can then have. More high rises or. And you can put a lot of people in a dense area, they can walk to the shops and where where they where they work, putting them up on the hills. On dirt roads. Uh, the the roads. Are struggling to maintain the current. Demands. And get the wildlife and everything. So I I think, you know, the answer is. Increasing the density of housing is the growth areas.
Okay. This is what I want from you. This is the information I want from you, not what questions put on the survey. Where do you want the town to go? Like, what do you, what do you think can help make it better? You think developing areas. Is a higher density that are. Less.
What about behind the post office? Do you know where that line is?
It's not very far up the hill, right?
Um. That whole area, it should, uh, I don't have the map with me. Yeah.
I don't.
You would know it. That's close, that's close if we could, there's wetland issues there. But that's great. People could. Walk all that whole little area along Route seventeen and stuff, right hill.
So people own this property, right? Like you own some of the property. Um, and arguably, I mean, you're sort of further out of town, but like. These people own this property, right? So they could choose to develop it if that's what they wanna do, but how do you incentivize? That landowner to develop that, right? Without putting D restrictions on, like, how do we make it? So these people want to do that? Cause we can decide we wanna develop certain parts of the town, but there, we don't own those pieces of property.
But the cost to develop and do people wanna be in those areas if you increase density? And make it pay.
Do we like? Do we propose like in art? So here's a town plan question. Do you think the town of Facetown should have a budget line? To have some sort of real estate lawyer on staff that would assist people? With pieces of property in areas that we deem would be good for developing to help them. Develop the permits and the plans and submit them to take some of the economic burden off of them. So they could more easily develop the property. That's a question you could put on your survey.
That's a question for sure, or you could also say. Um, the marketplace. Our 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 society is a capitalist society, yeah. People go where they get approval to develop. And where there's some financial incentives.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I don't want point fingers and say it's good or bad, but those new duplexes that are built. Down near Kenyans. Right, the town. Allow that. To be built.
So.
Standing.
I mean, we're on, I mean.
My understanding is what the town did. Is they. My understanding is that. In 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 return for ensuring those houses were deemed affordable, they were sold at a certain rate. The town gave a tax, a real estate tax. Uh, credit or deferral or something. To allow that to happen. And as long as they're kept. At a certain rate of. Of people that are eligible for them.
And they're listed at six hundred thousand right now.
Really?
Cause that's what it costs to build.
Wow. I mean, that project's interesting. We all know that it was flooded for a long time, but supposedly it flooded because of it. There's a V two trains of. Vermont Department of Transportation covert that was backed up, which caused the water to pool there, and that's why it was wet. And if the drainage was properly. Maintained, it wouldn't have been wet, but you saw when they they put it in. They dug a cellar hole, it flooded, they got the water out, and then they built them up on hire, but they're also supposed to be further back, and that's a big piece of property.
I think there's more going in there.
Yeah, and the parking, the the D R B approves it one way. Now, remember, this is Waze Field, not Facetown, so this isn't our purview, but you know. The D R B put some stipulations in the placement of those, and now it, you know, there's some, there's some um. They have to plant some vegetative buffer where the parking is, and it may not be going the way that the D R B had told them to do it.
Because of the water?
Because what? The town says and what the contractor does are not always the same.
But but the but the there. The town, depending on how it was worded. The approval of the bill and the certificate of occupancy, you need to meet the requirements. We built a solar farm. And there were, there were screening requirements that were put in place that we needed to meet. And we could not get our certificate to operate until the screening requirements. Were were met.
So someone held your feet to the fire?
Well, it's just, it was part of the agreement. Yeah.
There's people. To get a D R B approval to build fif- forty-five feet off the center line of the road. Then when they go to C O, it's thirty-eight feet from the center line of the road. They don't make them tear the house down. They just pay a fine.
Hmm. That's different.
But the the real question is. Affordability.
Oh, yeah.
Right, cause that's where this was supposed to be going. Right, so these guys were given tax credits or whatever this.
I don't know, I don't.
I don't know.
I don't know, that that.
And. My point is, it's still darned expensive to build. And I don't know. If we can address the affordability issue. By doing anything.
I don't think that new construction is the answer. For affordability. We have existing. Pieces of property now. Right?
I mean, res, you mean buildings?
We have existing buildings. There's lots of existing buildings, you know, that exists here. And like, I don't, I don't know the answer to this question. It's just a question like how? You know, and the reissue that I wanted to raise in our discussion about town plan is like. You know. Our schools are, it's out of control. That what we have to spend and the costs are going up, but the problem is we have an enrollment problem. We don't have enough kids attending, so our cost per pupil is hitting that magic number where once we go a dollar over that, we get taxed on everything. We're two hundred dollars from the top of that window. We can't go over fifteen thousand eight hundred and we're like fifteen thousand five hundred right now. Cost, cost per pupil, and we just need more pupils. We have, there's declining birth rates in Vermont. Where our our school enrollment is dropping, so our per pupil spending is going up, which is making it more difficult, you know?
And we have a four to one ratio.
Yeah, and. I mean, if you look at, if you look at it, like our budget this year is forty-eight million dollars, right? To do a level service budget for next year is fifty-one million dollars, but we have to cut the budget to forty-nine. We have to cut the budget another two million. At the heart, you know. We have to cut the budget by another two million. We've already cut everything down, and so. What I realized there was that like, it all comes back to housing. It all comes back to housing. We don't, we have, we have an aging population. In the town of Facetown. That are aging in place. They're not selling their houses. People can't buy houses. Like I have friends who've been living here for two and a half years in a rental house. And they try to buy every single house that comes on the market or that worked for them. And they can't.
Does somebody outfits them?
Somebody outfits them, and it turns into a vacation home that no, where's no one's living there, but I don't, I don't have the magic answer. I don't know the answer to this question.
I don't know the answer either.
But if 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 Facetown's gonna survive. We need to attract young families with children to enroll in our schools to help our schools. And. You know, our task base, because our taxes keep going up because. It. Very frustrating.
But the taxes are gonna continue to go up as long as we allow the state to run things.
Yeah. That is true.
I mean, it was their goal right in the beginning to shut a hundred and twenty Vermont schools, small schools, and we were on the list.
Yeah.
They deny it, but Doug Racine was here with that best.
You know a lot more about this than I already, and that's why it's really very dear in this room. You know?
Yeah.
Um. But it's. You know, if we reduce minimum last side of North Face and roads, we let people build houses, but it costs five hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars to build. You know, if it's six hundred dollars a square foot to build a house, you build a thousand square foot house, that's six hundred thousand dollars, right? And that's two bedrooms. They need three and four bedrooms. So. Something's happened, and then it all.
Large standards have escalated. Tremendous, right?
Fair.
Yeah.
So I mean.
I think we're a little off.
Yeah, a little.
And I'm fine. We don't need to stick to the survey, but we can stick to something.
No, that that's like, I.
I mean, I thought the survey was kinda actually helping keeping us going on the conversation with the bigger themes too, I think.
Yeah, but I mean, i- i- if you're, if you're filling out this survey and you're just really worried, like in your renting in Facetown. Are you really worried about how much land we're conserving? Are you worried about like, how am I ever gonna be able? Buy a house in Facetown?
Yeah, both, everything, I mean. You need to answer all these questions. But just for the. Tonight.
Hmm.
How do you wanna receive? You wanna keep going through the survey or do you want us to?
I mean, I I think that we let's. I think that ultimately, these are, this is a question bank that we have to put into an actual survey. We need to start building an actual survey on the internet. Where actually we can actually run through it, and then we can start typing in different questions and changing the answers, so someone can put it up on the screen. And we can go through like, this is great what we're doing, but it's like, it's the same way where we used to just talk about like, oh. Let's make the land use re- revision, but no one would come to the meeting with an actual. Let's make the land use re- revision, but no one would come to the meeting with an actual document we could vote on, you know, like, we need to produce what we're doing, you know?
This is our version, this is.
No, I understand, but I can't, we can't publish this, I can't.
I know, but we can type these questions in a format.
I think that's what we need to do.
Why can't we go through the content without?
Okay, I, I, I get you on that, but, but so let's not, let's talk about questions, not format.
What I got out of twenty-four.
Yes.
And twenty-five, or twenty-four. In the, in the one that's on the bottom of mine, does, are there any areas of zoning should be changed? Combine those two. Into a question, it says currently most of land along face the roads are zoned for one acre lots. Which of these areas would you support reduced lot size zone?
Yeah.
That's what I got.
Good with that.
Okay, and then for the column, the leftmost column. Do you see any areas that I should break up or add or?
Which one am I looking at?
Like, on the bottom, it says question twenty-four.
Twenty-four, it's after twenty-three, okay, so like Mount Island base area, Mount River Valley base area. Sugar Run Road, Marble Hill, Tucker Hill, that's just those three roads.
That area, yeah.
Bragg Hill, Fen Basin number nine, Cubasser.
Up behind in the, um. Irisville Common Area.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a very good one, so that would be. Uh, what would, okay, up behind, I will fix it, tripped it, uh, compasses.
I think. It's not quote Freddie, I think you need a map.
I've only been working on that for what, three, almost three years now?
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think it's ultimately like, I think we need to put a graphic up with a map. And we say like District one, District two, District three, District four, we make a little squiggly behind Irisville, that's District one. We make a little squiggly over near Bragg Hill and. The first part of Cubasser and going out towards number nine, you know, like. Up on stagecoach, you know what I'm saying? I think, I think that a visual representation is probably our best bet, does that make sense?
You're asking me how we do it in the computer with the spaceless.
No, that's literally just creating a graphic, putting it on a thing and then putting a question under it.
And because it's all being done electronically, when that question comes up, you're saying the questions would be at the bottom and then the map would be at.
Yeah, you'd like, so on a whole page, right, you'd see the map and it said. Um, looking at this map, what, what zones do you think could, you know, would be good for reduced, whatever.
Okay.
So question, where we'll make more restrictive?
Uh, that was part of, that was part of twenty-four and the next one down, so I didn't number. But I think I, I've lis- I've, I've listened to y'all and I've combined those two into where, where do we change zone? Okay, so now I'm at twenty-five, that was the old twenty-five, Andrew had. Um, that one, uh.
Point two. Are there?
Is it important wildlife habitat?
Yeah, 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 so, yeah, yeah, that was Andrew's.
We go to tables.
You know the difference between important wildlife habitat and wildlife tra- wildlife travel corridor?
Yes. Yes, so a wildlife travel corridor. Allows you to get from one large habitat area to another. So oftentimes creeks.
Or like, when they build those earth and bridges over a highway, so the animals.
Well, that's, that's, that's a manmade one, but you, you, if you, typically, if you've got one large tract of land. And then another large tract of land, they gotta be connected for the animals to go between.
Yep.
For instance, Schutzfeld Hill in Waterbury Center.
Um. Unfamiliar, but.
You're headed out of Waterbury Center. Um, up to where Walker Construction is.
Not familiar.
So I leave, I go, like.
You're staying right on Route one hundred.
So, you go, Shaw's is here, there's that big hill here, we keep.
Oh, yeah, you're past the cider mill.
You go past that.
And you're past, um, the Garden Center and the Green Mountain Club.
Yeah.
Are you past that? Yeah, and then you're going up the hill, uh, where. Habit, habit mills are.
And the late champagne chocolate stores on the left side?
Going way past that, so you're past the cider mill.
Andrew, tell.
You're almost in Stowe, just before you go, you go up that hill and then you go down into Stowe.
Okay, I don't spend much time.
Okay. It's Route one hundred, it's a heavily traveled area.
Yeah.
And that is a wildlife corridor right there on Schutzfeld Hill.
Okay.
To get to cross one hundred, so how do they get across one hundred?
They run across the road.
That's pretty scary, yeah.
But that, I mean, it's actually listed in the act two fifty tier three.
Oh, wow, like Moscow?
It's before Moscow Road.
Before Moscow, like.
Still in Waterbury Center.
So, it's basically an area for wildlife to go to another large area.
Okay, I'm pretty knowledgeable about a lot of things, but if I was answering the survey, I wouldn't know that. So, if you, you have to target the survey towards people that are not as intelligent as you. Um, so like, how do you, how do you put that in lay words?
So, large, the first one could be large wildlife habitat. Um, areas, and then. Uh, wildlife travel hair corridor, we put in parentheses, connecting wildlife habitat, significant wildlife habitat areas. Connecting.
Do we know where any of those are in Fason?
Yeah.
Well.
We're pinch point in the Green Mountains, right up here.
I would, I would think that there's a mass between Bragg Hill, Cubasser, Center Fason. And Old County that is like seventeen hundred acres of wildlife track.
Oh, that's.
Okay.
Crow, Java Corner?
No, that's a, that's a wildlife habitat area. And then above that, I think it's Fen Basin or like across Cubassers, you get up towards the ridge. That's a massive area.
Okay.
And so connecting those two is a relatively narrow cor- corridor of Cubasser. And the vast trail, the vast trails heavily traveled by the animals.
Like, cause like, there's, there's an area in North Fason where there's always deer crossing the road. Like, if you come around the corner, pass Smith Road, it's still paved, you come up, there's the people have their house down there, and then there's the woods on one side by abbys. And then there's woods over here, and there's always, I always slow down there, there's deer rows, that's me.
Apple trees up in there.
That's a wildlife travel corridor to me, because there's no development on this side of the road, no development this side of the road, and. But you're constantly crossing there.
Be one too.
And then up Randall Road from where I am, I always see the bears crossing just downhill from, I think it's the Maeve system, the, that beautiful home of the pond.
Bert Lancy's old place, yeah.
Yeah, the bears come through, come through there, cause there's eighty acres over here, so they come out of my property. Up the McCarty, and then they come across Randall Road and they disappear into the woods behind Kaminsky's house. Like, so I see that as a corridor, so if you put a house there. That would slow them down, so these are the corridors we're talking about.
They're really already fractured habitat.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm just noting places where I see that animals crossing the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, giving across Cubasser. How do the animals get from the ridge? To that area that's lower down for wintering and then go back up, when the summer comes, they've got to cross Cubasser.
Yeah, I think they do a lot of it at night.
They do, and they go, and they go on the vast trails. So I would, I would post, I, I would propose, you don't wanna put houses too close to Cubasser, the, the, to the Cube Brook Creek. Because that's the animal that are going up and down that vast trail.
Yeah, I mean, the bulk of my property is in current use because it's a deer wintering area.
Yes.
And I know, I mean, I can see their bedding areas in the winter, thirty or forty deer are sleeping within three hundred feet of my house.
Yeah. Yeah.
I like the question.
All right, and then, uh, my twenty-six, Andrew's.
Twenty-six, uh, twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, no. My twenty-six is, should it sound like twenty-five, I'm texting business. Andrew has it. Uh, yeah, yes, Andrew's twenty-three, correct, so he just basically took the same, but he got the same stuff there. And he's made a table out of it.
The only one I would add, maybe this is what you need by light industry, but manufacturing.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Where would you do that? We don't have a, I don't know, brush up near the industrial park, further up.
We just mentioned that similar area about commercial development. I mean, manufacturing doesn't have to mean like a paper mill, it could be like. I don't know, is Lawson's, is Lawson's Brewery Manufacturing, or is, uh? Is the, is the cabinet shop that just opened?
In Waysfield.
I know, I'm just saying, like, you could imagine something like that.
But that's like, that Mad River, that, that whole Mad River Park there.
Yeah.
So, and commercial.
But it doesn't have to be that huge manufacturing.
But I'd, I'd argue that part, I'm careful, is light industry, manufacturing, it's the lumber mill and stuff. Lawson's and there's a few warehouses there.
So does light industry and manufacturing need to be combined or separate?
I think so. And then, then I was, um, like, what about like, some commercial? Business, like, for example, power repairs. You know.
How about what?
Auto repairs.
I would say that's light industry.
Okay, light industry, manufacturing, auto repair, okay. Okay, twenty-six. And then I just, then what I did was I, I took for the next question. All those areas that I'd used in questions. So, um. That we talked about where to, where to change the zoning for. I put them down, this is, what would, what would you like to have for new business development? And then Andrew, we can put in the light industry, manufacturing, commercial. Um, so it's just the same places, this is essence of the question that was there. There's a fair fact? Twenty-seven?
Yeah, I think all of these, we're gonna use the same, same graphic that we're gonna develop, that makes sense? Would develop a graphic with districts.
Yeah, I'm not computer literate, but.
You're pretty literate. You're pretty good, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I'll knock your skill side.
The, the housing, now, before we go to the housing, I've been struggling with this concept of affordable housing. What is the simple to understand way of articulating what is affordable? And there were questions in the old survey that talked about, is your housing affordable? Do you feel as affordable? And I thought that was very subjective, so then I did a little research, yeah, their old thirty-three was. How do you consider it? I, I, I went through some research. And according to what I read on the, on the federal government website. A good rule of thumb is thirty percent of your housing, of your PD and utilities. Um, if you, if your total cost of your PD and, and housing utilities.
What's PD?
Principal, interest, taxes. And insurance. P I T I, that's your mortgage payment.
I thought you were saying PD like Police Department, okay.
Your, your, your mortgage payment.
Yes.
Okay, standard mortgage rate, which is normally if you got escrow, you're paying insurance as well as taxes on your escrow. So if your mortgage payment and your utilities is less than thirty percent of your income, that's considered to be affordable. By banks, and they're normally would give you a mortgage. Okay, as well as the federal government, and then like fifteen percent I thought was a nice breakpoint, cause that. Cause even if you're thirty percent, you're, you're still, you gotta watch your, you're, you're, you're pretty tight. And then thirty to fifty is not really very affordable, and greater than fifty percent is really not affordable. So I kind of just put those numbers down there so that if you are a full-time resident, are your housing costs? And I think that this would get us a idea of whether it's affordable or not affordable, by asking people that number.
And I think that this goes back to how long have you been here?
Maybe.
Because if you've been here a long time. And you bought your house forty years ago.
Maybe.
It makes this much more.
Or maybe you don't have a mortgage.
Or maybe you don't have a mortgage, but. Yep.
But I think hearing people say I need affordable housing. And I think this helps us to understand. How stretched people are.
I talk about, I talk about as workforce housing, this is what I focus on. Cause workforce housing is housing that can be.
We need.
We need workforce housing. Because when you say affordable housing, then we have to go to the state, we have to get, open up charts, and then we have to see if you make. Cause you have to make at least forty and less than eighty thousand to be able to live in these houses. You have to make less than forty thousand to live in this house, and if you make more than forty thousand for a period of twenty-four months, you lose your benefits. Or if you make more than eighty thousand for twenty-four months, you lose your benefits, so there's a disincentivize, if you, if you're living in one of these places. There's a disincentivize to start working more to make more money, because.
You lose stuff.
The gap between that affordable house, that's actual affordable housing by the state of Vermont code, to. The workforce housing is, is huge.
And, 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 and I understand what you said. But I, I still struggle to understand this whole affordability matrix very simply, and I think just asking. Are you spending less than thirty percent of your income on housing? Yes or no? If you are, that's reasonably affordable, that's what people generally are, are, are taught to spend. Okay, and banks will typically give you a mortgage if you, if your payments will be less than twenty-eight, twenty-eight. And if it's more than that. Then we got a problem, and, and if we come back and we find out, I hear people complain other taxes all the time. And I'd like to know, okay, are they basically spending thirty to fifty percent of their income? On their housing costs, which includes taxes and your mortgage and utilities? Or no, and if there's, I just need to know that.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was paying attention, but so we're in section on the all house, all residents housing, right? So this, question twenty-nine, you were okay with, right?
Um, yeah, 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 uh, Andrew and I kind of had the same thing there.
And then question thirty, how many bedrooms in your house you're okay with?
Yes, sir.
And then question thirty-one, you were okay with your owner rent?
Yes.
And then, did you like asking people how much money they actually spend and giving them a number?
We, we, we did put that down, and it was in the old. It was in the old survey, Andrew left it, I left it, one could argue that's very private, very intrusive.
Number thirty-two?
Also, but thirty-three I think is a very important question, and then you could tie that back to thirty-two if you know what it is.
So here's the thing. I don't know how big your house is, I don't know how much you're sharing, I don't know what you got inside of it, so knowing you spend five thousand a month to ten thousand a month. That's not a data point that helps me, knowing that your housing costs are thirty percent, fifty percent, seventy percent. That's a data point that I can use, so I'm a hundred percent agree with you.
Okay.
That we need to be, we need to take those two questions and turn it into a percentage of your monthly. And how much are you putting out for mortgage taxes, insurance and utilities? And that's a data point I see.
And you think thirty-two goes, we keep thirty-three.
Um, yeah, I just. When looking at your monthly housing costs, what percentage of your? Is it pre-tax or post-tax money that's coming into your house? Because like, this whole thing where people's like, they say you should.
It's gross.
I know, and it's ridiculous, because thirty percent of my gross, I lose thirty percent in taxes of my gross. So it's, so you look at thirty percent, like, let's say make a thousand dollars a month and my cost of three hundred. I'm only gonna bring home six hundred fifty dollars, so now it's fifty percent of my post-tax income is going to my housing costs. I always found this to be ridiculous, like, the number is.
You, you may, but, but that's our system, the American system.
But what I'm saying is, should we ask the question of how much of your, of your take-home pay goes towards your monthly costs?
And we can adjust it as long as it's safe for everybody.
Could, but my understanding is that we live in a progressive tax regime. So people that have a very low income are probably not paying much in taxes. So their gross is probably pretty close to their net.
I think people know their gross better than they know their net anyway, so.
Okay, fine.
So I'm gonna, I'd rather, I'd keep thirty-two as, in there as well.
You like it.
You want the actual number?
Yeah, why not?
Well, I, I think you could tie the two together and find out, like, if people are complaining. And seeing how high those costs are. That gives us one piece of information, but if they're high and people aren't complaining. And people aren't complaining.
I don't know, it just gives us a good idea of how much it costs to live here.
Yeah, oh, an actual dollar.
Yeah.
Alright, I appreciate your, yeah.
Okay, so we keep thirty two and thirty three, okay?
You can always, we can put the prefer not to answer thing too, if it's.
So then should the town encourage affordable housing?
That's to your point, defining affordable housing if we're gonna use it. Like uppercase A, lowercase whatever.
Well, so. At that point, like I, I really would like to survey that have, give people information before they ask questions, you know? And like maybe we put a definition of affordable housing and then a definition of workforce housing and we say. Do you think the town should encourage affordable housing? Do you think the town should encourage workforce housing? And we create workforce housing as a term. And affordable housing already is a term.
Yeah, we can work on defining them.
How is the town supposed to affect that?
Well, affordable housing is tax incentives and helping people do that.
So let's just talk about that for a second. So we give tax incentives for more people to come. That's not expanding the tax base. But it is increasing. The demands on services, so how's that helping us?
Well, because we have restaurants that are closing because no one can work there, because we, no one can live in this valley and make twenty dollars an hour. Which is a lot of money from when I was a kid. Like we have, we don't, we.
They were all here until COVID. That's the thing, we were booming.
Do you want me to tell you what happened? I can tell you what happened.
Yeah, tell us.
It's short-term rentals, it all comes back to short-term rentals.
It does. You know, it's low interest rates.
Okay, low interest rates, there was people that were living in condos up on the mountain and they were paying like twelve or sixteen hundred dollars a month to live in a three-bedroom condo, right? Then all of a sudden, everybody wants to come up here and live up here and work from home. And these people are seeing all these people making all this money on short-term rentals and they're like. I'm collecting twenty thousand dollars a year from this guy who works at the local gas station. I can make twenty thousand in President's Week if I just kick this guy out and short-term rent it.
Combination of things.
Okay. I mean. I mean, I, I, the number of people that used to live in the valley that were living in those condos up on the mountain. And I had this whole argument with my brother-in-law, he's like, you need apartment buildings, like we have apartment buildings, they're called the condos up at Sugar Bush, that's.
But they were built as second homes.
Yeah. I mean, I owned one for most of my life and it was a second, I know what they were built for. But they turned into. A cheap, of cheap housing for people that weren't using them, they would just rent them to people. And they would, they, you know, it covered their condo fees, it covered their taxes. It was an asset they had, but you know, when we sold our Middle Earth in nineteen ninety seven for seventy five thousand dollars. And then it sold recently for five hundred and twenty, it's the same condo, my parents bought it for. Twenty grand in the seventies, we sold it for seventy five in the nineties, it like. It doesn't make sense. Sorry. Back to your question.
So back to the question, I think certainly more. I, I struggle with that question. Because I think we need to have. Definitions here. And. If you assess, should the town encourage affordable housing? Yeah, sure.
Should the town encourage workforce?
How?
So the only thing I can imagine as a way that we can impact it. Is to address the ADUs. You don't think that they're an issue?
ADUs or short-term rentals?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Short-term rentals. I mean, Warren asked, I mean, Warren's put that thing into place, it doesn't have as much teeth as it wanted to have, but.
Well, I looked at this a whole. Bunch of different ways that I don't know how you enforce, it's a change of use. It's a business.
Oh.
I'm not fully against regulating short-term rentals, I'm just saying it's not gonna solve the housing crisis.
No.
Not solve. It won't solve it, it might slow it down.
Slow it down, I mean, I think you've had an excellent opinion and that is people who are living in their homes and go, yep, I'm gonna rent out this. Mother-in-law's apartment for the weekends.
Yeah.
You know, that's a good use of. That.
Yeah.
And we're now in a situation where we don't have restaurants, so we. Have people come stay in lodges, because there's nowhere for them to go to eat.
Yeah.
Um, so that's a situation. Right, you'd have to rebuild this slowly. But I do think that the short-term rentals play a role, I just wish I had a more, I wish I had data about how. It affected things, how many we have.
And that's what Warren's trying to do.
Exactly.
And like, I don't. I think the first step in the, is, and they learned that is just gathering the data, like do we have, what is going on?
Sure, I mean, but we've got a lot of stuff like GMBS. They bought two houses and took them right off the tax rolls. They bought a number of houses and they come right off the tax rolls.
Who lives in those houses?
I think some of their staff, I don't know.
Okay, so they're providing housing for their staff by bought purchasing homes. And because they're part of school, they don't pay property taxes anymore?
Right.
Wow.
They, they give us a paltry fee, which was not the agreement when they built the school.
Hmm, okay.
Wanting to buy jobs and.
Oh, oh, they certainly do.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, I'm a GMBS fan, but if there's the other side of it, that should be addressed if we wanna make all things fair to all people.
Well, taxing education. Institutions is a bigger topic, I think. It's not basing it specific.
Right.
I mean, UVM and Burlington have this issue too.
Yep, and I think, you know, when True North was gonna buy, uh, buy that land up on Murphy Road. You know, they, one of their arguments was it's a school. And it was like, hmm, that doesn't benefit the kids of Facedown. And do we wanna be able to have them pull it off the tax rolls? So I think that's something we should address when we do the town plan.
How do we expand the tax wall?
Okay.
That's a good question.
More money for the town that we're gonna add to the survey, because I do have a proposal for that.
For what?
For how to add more money to the town and a question that we could put on the survey.
Would that, that, that question that you have in your head probably should be written down because I don't have that in there, we did not. Um, I didn't put it in.
Oh, no, I, I'm, yes, but, yeah.
Okay, so we could put another question here about how to expand, what was your question?
Oh, no, I have a proposal, it's not a question, I'm gonna add a question, when we're done with these questions.
I'm writing it down right now, so you didn't mention it, what is it? Thirty four, I still struggle with. How do we get around this concept of affordable housing?
Okay, so originally, the question for thirty four was. What? Originally, the question was, should the town become more actively involved encouraging the development of affordable housing, yes, no, or not sure? And you changed it to, how should the town encourage affordable housing? Write in an answer.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, 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 I would like to hear some ideas.
Well, I'm more on the struggle bus with your answer, I mean, you want people to tell you.
Yeah.
That's fair.
I, 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 I would like to know how to do that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, we'll just, just see what we get there.
So you just, because, so let's look at the data that comes out of the survey, right? So it's gonna say thirty four and then it's gonna be on an Excel spreadsheet of. Enter, 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 enter.
Most people are gonna say we need affordable housing.
How about yes, no, not sure ideas?
Well, I would argue that most people, I mean, from what I'm hearing in this group. People want it. And I'm hearing that most people say we need affordable housing. Do you think there's people in the town would say, no, we don't?
No, but I think that it's a difference, it's like, should the town encourage slash? Put resources to it.
Because.
Versus not.
How should the town encourage affordable housing? Only changes for a tax incentive?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know, but I, I, I hear on the one hand, I hear, oh, we need, we need more people. But then I think that's gonna be more services than we have this big tax burden, how are we gonna pay for all this? That's, that's where, that's.
Right, you want concrete answers and not just virtue signaling.
So I, I'm gonna stand in front of my neurons and ask people if they're resident of Facedown and ask them. Hey, can you fill out this survey and here's a raffle ticket to win this pair of keys or whatever, right?
Really? I'm, I'm just gonna stand there and ask more questions, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not phoning off any raffle tickets.
Oh, no.
My purse is not as deep as yours.
Unless. What I'm saying is, we're gonna go out in the community and we're gonna try to get donations from people to, in, to create an incentive for people to fill out the survey. You know, we need answers, like they're not getting good responses, so part of this is developing the survey. The other part is developing our marketing plan to get people to actually fill it out. And if you have too many writing questions, the survey becomes difficult, I'd like this. And I think it's important that we get people's ideas, and if you're sitting at home in front of your computer. I could write you a paragraph about how I think we should do affordable housing, right? So. It, I, what I'm saying is balancing the person who we can get through a QR code. At home in front of their computer who can give us time in front of the wood stove with. Me, people, talking to people in front of my neurons and how. You, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, I do like, here's what I'm struggling with, I'm happy to, I'm thirty four, make a table.
Yeah.
And say, how should the town, what, which of the following do you think the town should use to, to attract or build affordable housing? And if we had some ideas. I don't.
Okay.
So if this group can come up with some ideas for how to do it. I'm happy to put a table together.
So like, that might be. You know, calling Ron and being like, hey, how can you make affordable housing work? You know, we, we contact some builders. And just ask them for their ideas as we're building the survey, because we wanna avoid that bias of asking the question of, we only see that this is the way, the way we can do it.
Yeah, or we, I like Freddie's idea, we do yes, no, if, yes, how?
Yeah, that's no, if you think so, he's telling how. I like your questions, I, I think, I think it's great, I think we can have a write-in answer.
Okay, well, yes, no, and if, if yes, how?
Yes, yes, no, and any suggestions. I think yes and no, and then. Um, comments and suggestions, comments slash suggestions, someone can say.
On how to.
I, I think it's, we should force people, if you're gonna say yes.
How do we do it?
How do we do it?
Yeah.
Because. Just saying.
You wanna.
Yes. I, 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 I would like to know, because people need to, to. This, need to articulate. How to do it. Is it, is it changing?
Has a thoughtful answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, is it, is it changing the zoning to force everybody to have, to allow everybody to have duplexes on, on a one-acre law? Okay, that's what people want. Is it, is it through tax incentives where you bring people in and you, and you say you don't have to pay taxes if you make less than a certain amount?
So yes, no.
Is it, is it facing building? Um, what we used to call in the UK council housing, which is owned by the town?
Hey, how about you just make people tell you either way, if yes, why, if no, why? Because then you're gonna get, I think the town should be focused on this, not affordable housing.
Let me change the question, because it's how should the town encourage affordable housing?
Oh, yeah, sorry, it's, it's.
Okay, so should the town encourage affordable housing? Yes, no, and why?
Well, so is it should or is it how should?
Well, should.
It was, how should?
It was.
But I think it should just be should.
No, it was, the question was, should the town become more actively involved in encouraging development of affordable housing? Michael changed it to, how should the town encourage affordable housing?
Now we're gonna go back to should.
Yes, so we're going back to should, not shall.
Yes. Oh, geez. I gotta wait tonight.
Hopefully with your wife.
My wife?
Oh, cute.
His wife now, they got married.
I know.
They're, they're now living. Oh, what else we got?
Um, thirty. So, so.
Do you have an accessory building or apartment?
Yes or no?
For your accessory building? Do you currently rent it? So these are the ADU questions, they were driving an ADU agenda in this, in the survey, do we wanna drive an ADU agenda in our survey? Do we care about ADUs?
I think so, I, I think, I think it's important to know. Cause I'm hearing. That some people want to have more people here, where are you gonna put them? And the, there, the, 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 the legislature. Thought that one of the solutions was ADUs. And we came up with some. Leniency on our ADU regulations to allow it. So let's see how that. How that.
I think that the way that I see ADUs helping is. People who live in, who actually live on their property, have an ADU and they put it out as a short-term rental to make extra income for their property, which then. Will dilute the market of ADU of, of, you know, Airbnbs and. Then all of a sudden, the other ones that, that are whole houses, that are owned by people that never come here and they're running this a business. Those, those will be as occupied as often, and we can take some of that money that's just leaving the state every time those people pay. And it's staying here to our townspeople and helping them have a better affordable life, because they have extra money to do the things they wanna do and they invest locally in our economy.
I would argue. Um, that. The ADU market is a. Different rental market. Than a single-family home market. If you had a single-family home that was nine hundred square feet. Small little bungalow, then yes, you would compete on the short-term rental market for the same kind of price.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna compete for the same clientele. Trying to rent a nine hundred square foot or a thousand square foot or twelve hundred square foot ADU when you've got a. A separate, single-family home that's got five bedrooms in it. It's a different clientele.
You're right.
So, um, I do think. That the state thinks having ADUs. Is a, is a solution to the housing crisis. Or one of the solutions. And I'm not so sure. And this data would help us to decide. If people are using it for income. Like. Or within, or renting it out.
Yeah.
Or his grandma moving in.
Yes. You currently rent it as non-transient housing. Non-transient means non-short-term, right?
I would just say, do you rent it long-term or short-term?
Yeah. Yeah, huh, huh, okay.
Or how do you?
Do you rent it, I think, do you rent it long-term, short-term?
But what if grandma's in there? And you're not getting any money from it, but grandma's not going in the nursing home.
Um, do you have a long-term or a short-term tenant?
Yeah, do you? Have. Long-term or? Short-term. Okay. So that would be the question thirty seven.
And then would you consider providing an accessory apartment for others to rent? Yes, no, not practical, hostile, not sure?
And why does it have to be an accessory building?
What? What's accessory?
Question thirty six is for your accessory building.
Oh. Let's see, what it was.
So why not just change that? How many bedrooms occupied seasonally, occupied year-round?
It says, do you have, the question was, do you have an accessory building on your property or apartment within your house, which you regularly provide as non-transient rental housing? For your accessory building, please indicate.
But maybe it wants to be. You know, part B. Thirty-five B, how many bedrooms? And you get that information, because do you care if it's a separate building or one of the same?
It says, would you can. So question thirty seven was, would you consider providing an accessory apartment for others to rent? An accessory apart, and then a definition, accessory apartment. Is defined as a separate living unit created within or adjacent to a single-family home and occupied by either a family member or non-family tenant. So you're. You're saying. Change it from accessory going to accessory unit?
To just, um, do you have an accessory building on your property or an apartment within your house? Which is thirty-five?
Yes, and I shortened that and. What did, um, Andrew do, Andrew?
Yeah, shortened it too.
Yeah, we both shortened it.
Okay. So then, yes or no? So why not just? Information about your building, about your.
Accessory unit, can we call it a unit?
Yeah.
Can we stop calling it a building or apartment, can we call it a unit?
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just cha-change the unit.
So from number thirty-five, should we go back to the way it was originally worded? So from number thirty five, should we go back to the way it was originally worded and call it an accessory unit? Sensory dwelling unit, ADU.
That's what it is.
Yeah, accessory dwelling units.
So thirty five is, do you have an accessory dwelling units? And then question thirty six, free accessory unit, please indicate how many bedrooms occupy seasonally or year round. And so we take off the dwelling just to have less reading and just make it a unit.
And non transient housing. Seems. Like I know it's probably a legal term, but it it feels like we're saying, no, you know, somebody who's not homeless.
So do you have a long term or short term tenant is what we said, decided to do for thirty seven?
Well, it could because you could also rent it seasonally. You could be renting your unit. To three lifties for the entire winter and then in the summer, you just have people come visit you to go hiking, or you could be renting it to. Someone works for the nature conservancy in the summer and then in the winter, you're doing Airbnb's with your unit. You know, you might have a long term rental in the summer and 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 do be, cause that's where you're gonna make your money.
Well, you could say, do you have short term or long term or both?
You have short term, long term, or mixture of the two.
Yeah.
Or like.
Well, it tends.
I don't, I don't wanna keep asking percentages, but do you like what percentage of the year is your unit occupied? By a renter or whatever.
I think we get the idea of say.
Yeah, it works. I I think I think ultimately, when we have the survey in front of us and we're like really. Tweaking this and someone's got a keyboard in front of them, we're gonna straighten this question out.
Okay.
Would you consider providing accessory units for others to rent?
Change the word again.
I I I'll, so it's to summarize, just so I'm gonna go and make all these changes in the survey and give it back to everybody.
Um.
And you can disseminate information without violating the open meeting law.
Yeah.
As long as we don't have a conversation amongst ourselves about it.
Yeah.
And we don't take any action on it.
Well, I could send it to Jason, say, Jason, please distribute.
Yeah, or you can send it out.
Um, does.
It's fine.
So.
You okay with that, Andrew?
Yeah.
Is it? I do, I wanna make sure that our energy is being used in the most constructive process, right? Like, at certain point, this needs to be put into an actual survey, right? But you feel.
I I feel my brain is got this information in it. And I've made some notes.
But if I was like, let's say like, let's say like, I was to peel out two hours of my life to come to your house to the laptop and you and I sit down. In front of Google and we work on building the questions and actually building the survey. And then if you start picking it up really quickly, you could do it by yourself.
I I don't have any interest in that.
Okay, so but you ha- are interested in producing another Word document of the questions.
But then it can send it to you and on your own, you could make it into a.
Yeah, but I really wanna, I I. I'd work with that, I'd work with anyone. I mean, I I.
This is my, this is my skill set.
I I'm with you. So what I'm.
The only working in Google is a new skill set that I probably should learn. But I'm a pecking order of priorities. It's low.
I understand that. What I'm saying is. Rather than you making another Word document. Could we try working together to type it into the computer and make an actual survey?
Why don't I I can give you my notes and you can do it. Cause I I I'm, what I'm trying to say, Langford, is.
I don't wanna.
I don't want to work in Google. I don't.
If you wanna do your next draft in the Word doc, I can do the Google doc, I can do the Google form from from that.
Is that, is that?
Yeah.
I mean, it's it's I can't, I can't volunteer someone else to do it, you know, like, I have to, I have to, like, if you, I mean, I've played with it, it's really. Yeah, I mean, if we can get into a Google form so we can sit here and and you're the author of it, then we can ta- edit it and we'd be like. Off to the race.
But it'd still be helpful to have updated Word doc.
You, it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's changes.
Okay.
Okay, now we're gonna child care.
I don't have any changes in here.
No, we, I I didn't.
What is the, what is the purpose of this section?
Well, as you said earlier, people need childcare to work sometimes.
Okay, so what's the information that we wanna get from the?
Do you feel you got childcare, adequate childcare, daycare in a community? Center just closed down at what Church of the Snows or something down there?
Lady of the Snows.
Part of it, Lady of the Snows closed down and so.
And all.
That affected people.
But all the home daycares closed when the schools took all the three and four year olds, right? Cause a home daycare can only have. Two children, two and under per adult. And if all you can have is two and under, cause the schools take the three and four year olds, what the hell did they think was gonna happen?
It's a fair statement. Um, no, I'm just saying.
And they thought they were gonna get a whole bunch more money for these kids.
There are one, two, three, there are five questions.
Nothing to do about education.
About childcare, right? These questions are, is there adequate childcare? Does it allow you to work? How many of your children are in daycare? Do you have problems finding high quality daycare or your monthly daycare costs? Like, I know a lot of people that literally only have jobs, the moms only have jobs to get health insurance and their entire paycheck goes to pay for childcare.
Yeah, so these are relevant, I think.
So so, how would you answer these questions? You you will be a young parent. You're gonna need childcare or are you gonna stay home?
Uh undecided, but. We're we're looking into childcare.
Okay.
Determining factor, so it's a big deal.
So I think you'd be able, you'd be interested in thirty eight, you'll find out the answer to thirty eight.
Yeah.
Okay, uh you may, because of the answer to thirty eight, find that you can't do thirty nine.
We've been.
No, I think these questions are great. I I I just wanna make sure that they're the right questions.
I mean, I think that they are important for the town plan, cause there are ways we can.
Oh, no, I've changed the town plan or.
No, we need to ask the questions.
Yeah.
Right, I just, these are the other questions. Are these the same questions we wanna ask? We need to ask these questions. We need to find out how much people are spending on childcare. Do they need childcare? How many kids do they have? Are these, these look good?
I think you'd wanna know, uh, how much are your monthly childcare cost? How many kids are in there?
The percentage?
Well, like, how many kids are in there, right?
Well, we got forty and forty two, we'll get to that, right?
How many kids are in childcare? What are your monthly doc, like, so we asked the question. But a little bit back there, it said, what's the percentage of your monthly income you spend on? Mortgage taxes, insurance and utilities. Do we ask the question, what's the percentage of your monthly income you currently spend on childcare?
I didn't tell you that.
I don't know if that's relevant, because I don't know.
Well, in the case of like, a mo- a mother who decides to go to work just to get health insurance. And ninety percent of her monthly income is going to.
Sure. My daughter, who's an executive in the healthcare systems in Boston, did that.
Yeah.
Until her kids went to school.
Yeah.
My daughter's paying more uh out of pocket for daycare than she's making.
But she keeps working.
Yes.
My entire, my my, basically, for a while, my wife's entire salary at her job as an architect paid for childcare.
Yeah.
And she did it because she wanted to keep working.
Yes, and that's what.
And that was the decision we made.
So I I think, I think. The percentage of your income is not as.
Relevant.
Relevant as the cost of daycare and I it's, I mean, my kids are paying two grand a month per child. You know.
My daughter was paying sixty three thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so.
For how many?
When you.
For two, so that's uh thirty two. Well, that's just two, almost two and a half.
That was nine years ago.
Two and a half, almost three grand. Then right now, the goal rate is two grand a, two grand a year, for two grand a month per child.
Neck of the woods is a little cheaper than that, which is kinda amazing.
A little bit less around here, but not much.
So much community.
Well, there you go. There's an affordability aspect. On the better of values, cheaper.
When you're building.
The average income's probably a lot less, too.
Andrew, when you're, when you're building this part, I think the first question is. Do you require childcare, yes or no? And if it's no, it sends you to all resident services. And if it's yes, then it will drive you to the other, these other questions, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So like, the first question should be. Do you currently or do you currently have or need childcare? Do you not need childcare? And if it's no, we don't even ask these questions. And if it's yes, we ask these questions, fair?
Jump to question.
Yeah, well, I would just, that's how the, that's how the survey will build it. So we add that question and then all the other questions are great.
I think um the childcare. Another question that's interesting for me to know is, is the childcare. Paid, like you go to a commercial entity? Or is it your childcare done?
By grandma.
By friends or your parent or 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 family? Cause old days, maybe it used to all be family.
Wanna add a question to.
Yeah, is, are, do you? Does a family member? Family for childcare, do you require childcare, yes or no? Is your childcare at a center or is it done by family?
Or friends, like like there could be a babysitting for childcare.
Right, so there's gotta be a way that you word that differently.
Well, do you? How do you, how do you get your childcare? Uh, is it, is it commercial? Uh, family? A pair?
So.
There's various things.
Where's your childcare provided? In a center, in my home? Right? Now, if it's in my home, that sends you to a question, do you have a nanny? Yes or no? Right? And then I, it ends there, basically, or you can say, what are your monthly, what do you pay your nanny? But if it's, if it's in a center, it says um. Is there adequate childcare, daycare in the community?
Um, does it ask if you work full time? I turn the page.
No.
Cause if you're working full time and you're requiring full time childcare, that's very different than if you're working part time and have part time childcare.
Yeah.
Like, say you have somebody who comes into your home and is there five hours a day. That's different than you working eight hours a day plus an hour commute each way.
Yeah, so in Facein, our pre K is two days a week. And three year olds go two days a week and four year olds go to two days a week and nobody goes on Fridays. So Neck of the Woods picks up the slack for most families in the valley for Facein. I'm supposed to know all this stuff. In Warren. They do it differently and they have a in school childcare. In Moretown.
Which is where Neck of the Woods started.
In Moretown where they started. I know, I should know all this stuff. I I feel sad that I don't know exactly how pre K three and pre K four work in every school district, but I only know Facein. Um.
Time, you weren't born knowing any of this.
I try. I have children, so like, and I, and I have friends who have children, so. So in Facein, parents need, if you have a three or four year old, you need childcare three days a week to work full time. And the other two days a week, they're going full day at Facein School. In Warren, they all go half day and then they're all provided, there's a, you pay to have your kids stay at school for aftercare. And that's how it used to be in Facein, right?
That kindergarten was half day.
Yeah.
Five days a week. And it was split during time of the day, depending on how many kids needed to use the room.
I think the childcare questions are are difficult.
But I I think we have to broaden it to say, you get a commercial, family, friends, co op, or all care. I think that's important to know. Okay. All residence services, please rate the quality of available services. And they had a bunch of.
Yeah, I I think this is perfect and I think you stay with everything that's there.
I think I should say, do we wanna say in the valley?
Um.
And not, right, cause we're questioning people for Facein. But we wanna say that these services are in.
Yeah.
The valley.
Yeah. Oh, well, yeah, the middle of high school are in the valley, the state police are in the state.
Yeah.
This county sheriff's in the county.
Right, so somehow, I think that's.
I don't.
There's still the available services, though. I mean, everybody knows the.
Yeah, I think.
As long as we're clear.
I think we should ask, don't know, it's another question, cause I don't know, I I.
I put N A, yeah, don't know.
I I don't.
You wanna know N A, ambulance, childcare, senior service?
No, ambulance, I I know, because the ambulance service, but I don't know, I didn't know, you know, where the sheriff is.
Well, we have the Washington County Sheriff in this town of Facein, right? But they don't come on any of our dirt roads. And they just, they don't actually come into Facein unless you call them, and it's the state police that come here.
So we're all asking. Sheriff. Do we have another column here?
Nobody wants that.
Do we have another column here that says, don't know?
Yeah, you can put, you can put, don't know.
Cause I don't know some of this.
Or you, you can pay no, it, what's wrong with man? Says very poor, poor, man, good, excellent, is that?
I wanted to make sure you guys read it. You used to say average, and I put man. I wanna see if you guys read it.
Okay, all right, so man is average, but yes, don't know sounds great, um. No comment or don't know?
No healthcare? Do we keep that in?
Healthcare, excellent. We now know that it's.
Gone.
It's sub man, it's very poor.
I think you need to also put. Comments at the bottom of these big scales where people can write stuff in.
Well, there's other.
No, but okay.
No, what I'm saying.
You just put, make that whole area notes.
Yeah, I would just add, I would, when I'm building the survey, I put notes so that people can put extra information for us that we can then decipher.
Okay.
Bell phone towers.
I changed this a little bit.
A little bit of a leading question, I think, here.
Yeah, you think there's a little bias in that one?
Oh, I would take out the first sentence.
Okay, would you, okay, fine.
I don't disagree, I just.
Would you support installation of? Cell towers? To improve our cell phone service in the following places?
So, do you know what cell towers pay?
No.
It's like, i- it's like twenty thousand a month. If you get AT and T and Verizon, if you can get the permits to pull it, like, if we put a tower on Town Hall, if someone was willing to do it, right? Because um Chris Austin just put one in on his property and that's why we have more service up and down North Facein Road. They put it in five years ago, but still.
Chris Austin?
Yeah, the builder. Am I getting his name wrong? No?
Or his dad?
That, he lives, that's, he lives that way, right? That, I mean, I'm in Town Hall, like, right there. Yeah.
Okay. I just thought you were saying North Facein.
No, cell towers work for, it's a five mile circle. You can, you can contact a cell tower for about five miles, depending on line of sight, right? So he put a tower in, it's just supposed to help, and it did. There's better cell phone service in North Facein Road.
Yes, I wondered about that.
You can get to basically like random road before your call cuts out if you drive, and you're amazed, you can't make a call from random. But you can finish a call at.
Yes.
Much past that, you're done.
Thanks, Chris.
Anyway, so if the town, if if we put a cell tower on Town Hall, if we get the cell providers to put it here, we put a huge tower that looks like a tree here. The the property owner makes income every month for the landladies and they pay for everything to be put in. There's a lot of money in putting in cell towers, because the cell companies pay. It's a, it's, so do you support? The town of Facein putting cell towers in on property they own?
Like, I don't think that's a question.
What?
I don't think that's the question.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about what questions we want in the survey for when it comes to cell towers.
I I think it's asking if we're okay with them going in other places in town.
Okay, well, we could add a row then um for. On town owned property.
We just bought that piece of property at the top of Sharpshooter, Town of Facein, right?
It was donated.
But it's, it's not fine.
Oh, 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 on Sharpshooter.
Top of Sharpshooter, before you get, I mean, if we could put a cell phone tower in the gravel pit. Or we could put a cell phone tower in the gravel pit and that would bask, that would put, that would give you five bars of your house.
But we put one right here.
We could put one here, we could put one in the gravel, we could put one in the town pit, we could put one up there, like, we could put cell towers on town owned properties. As a revenue generating device. And I think that's a question we could ask the people of Facein.
Well, we can add town owned land here for an option.
Yeah, I, yeah.
But I mean, I asked this question.
I would, do we change it to, instead of absolutely no?
Absolutely.
Definitely.
To what?
Yes, no, maybe, or I don't know.
Oh, yeah, he created.
Absolutely no, sounds very.
He's here, what, is this another trick?
Well, I have a grandson. That there's. He he can do things even if you say no, but if you say absolutely no. Then he realizes he's not supposed to do that.
Cause originally they were just saying.
So what is probably located on existing towers?
If there's a TV antenna or something.
Oh, I see.
Well, that'd be hard, it it'd be hard to stop someone from adding a Verizon antenna to an A T and T cell tower. It's already there, the infrastructure is already there.
I I don't know if there's other tower, but I know for a fact where I used to live. It was an area that they resisted vehemently cellphone towers. But the cellphone service. Was not good. And the solution was to put on utility poles. So they're not as high, so they had to have more of them. But they put them on utility poles and the cellphone service got really good. Yeah.
So when when they were trying to put that cellphone tower in Warren. There was people standing in front of my hearings that I got a conversation with and they were concerned that. Cellphone towers cause brain cancer in in young people.
Yes.
These are the same people that just moved from. Incredibly urban areas where they were, they were. What? They were not.
Some might have been, but.
So the women I was speaking with, I knew. Had just moved from cities where there are literally. Anywhere they were standing, there was at least ten cellphone towers very close to them, maybe they moved here to get away from cellphones, maybe that was their driving factor.
There is, there is some, there are some people. That say that they do that. I have not seen the data. I have a good friend of mine who's. The deputy chief engineer for the F C C. So he's worked this. And he says there's no data that says it does, he doesn't happen. So.
I'm with him.
Okay, um, but I'm I know there is a. There are some people that believe that, I just haven't seen the data.
There's a.
To substantiate there.
Substantiate that in a way that's defensible.
There's a public safety concern of not having cellphone coverage. For first responders and things like that, especially when. I, okay.
We got it done perfectly fine. Before we had cellphones.
I know.
Just like you don't need to take your cellphone everywhere you go and your kid doesn't need it at school, I mean. Landlines work just fine.
I think the issue though, Freddie, is a lot of us. Don't have landlines anymore, I don't have a landline.
Uh, you, when I grew up, when I grew up, I knew my parents' phone number and there was these things called paid phones, do you remember those?
We had three ones all through the valley.
Yeah.
And at the high school.
There are no, I mean. I'm wrong probably, but there's very few of any paid phones.
There's very few in the back.
And I remember growing up here. At Sugar Bush, there was, there's two free free phones I used to call my parents, I would come to the mountain when I was seven years old and go skiing. Then I called them, where are you? Oh, we're just getting dressed, okay, I'll meet you at Gate House or whatever. It's a different. It's it's great.
But when we see the damage it's causing to kids by having cellphones, we should consider returning to landlines.
So I guess the question is, right now, would you support installation of cell towers to improve our cell service in the following places? We could, are you saying, Freddie, we should say?
No, 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 I'm not, no, that's my personal opinion, it has nothing to do with this question.
Do we abolish cellphones and acting town line? Have a box?
This is a crown, when you give me the scepter, I can take care of that.
Towers down.
Yeah, 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 we can put another question, should we be taking down existing cellphone towers?
I want to make something fun really clear, like, there is something for the fact that there's no cellphone service in most of the facing, it does help. To just. Unplug.
Sure, there was no cellphone service at Harwood. For a long time.
Yeah, people, people need to unplug. We're well too, we're way too connected. So the question of cellphones in the valley is one that has a viable, and I think.
That's other people's question, that's not mine, and you know, I'm an old. Part on these things.
So, but I think there must be more than one question about cellphones.
But what would the other question be?
Do you feel that there's enough cellphone service in the valley, yes or no?
Do you think cellphone service in the valley is adequate, yes or no, okay?
Do you think the cellphone service in facing? Not the valley.
Or.
Based in.
Is it, does it need to be expanded?
Would you?
If so.
You thought, I got that.
Would you export, would you support the expansion of cellphone service in facing?
Is adequate or no? I got that.
Yeah, forget that.
Okay, yeah, we got. Okay, so I'm gonna go write up something in the word and you can go and change and masterize it on in your Google.
The jokes are coming out, okay, so. What is that, what's this wind power stuff?
Well. That was in that energy. So, do we? Should the town encourage use of uh, production? The wind production. Of wind power, okay, that's one question. Uh, should the town encourage use of solar power generation?
I just kind of feel like. What would we really do?
Um, change our biolast to allow. I mean, we would allow, we would change the. The zoning to say, yeah, we can put. Wind turbines up on top of the ridge. Like when you go to.
When you go to Lowell.
Where?
Lowell.
Where's that?
Uh, north. Between here and Newport.
Uh, yeah, there's El Elmore, El Elmore store. Went to the Elmore store north, there was a bunch of wind turbines I could see on some of the ridges. So, yeah, that's what we could do. I know that a lot of people don't like them, and they probably so, but some people may, we may.
But do you, when they created this question? Do you think that the people who create this were just trying to get people to say that they don't want them on ridge tops?
I think that the situation in Lowell. Was just becoming apparent where they blew the top of the mountain up to get them up there.
Really? So I.
Yeah.
I. I used to fly a small airplane from Vermont back and forth to Boston when I flew for Cape Air, I was based in Rutland, I used to fly there, I went to Sarnac Lake, so I used to fly over Northern Vermont. And I know where all this, so, I mean, I can, you can just see them and the impact of the access roads to put these. Stupid wind turbines that are never spinning on the top of these ridge lines, they're just, you can see this path of destruction.
Yeah, I think that the question, I think environmentally act two fifty would really. Come down on that. But, um. It's almost moot and then the sound and the way it travels that were unintended and unknowable. But because we just don't know enough about that stuff is.
So to ask this question, like what I'm saying is like, yeah, what you're saying, we change our biolast, but do we really need to ask about wind energy, do we really wanna poke that bear?
It's, it sounds like.
I think the point is to poke the bear.
Yeah, it's asked what the town wants.
To, to what end?
I mean, what the town wants. What is the town's opinion on wind power, right?
Does that people who, you know, who drive up my up my driveway to tell me I'm evil because I made, I made diesel all my life.
They come up here, they come to your house.
People come up, yeah, they come up and they.
Cause they know who you are?
No, 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 there's people that. That go door to door.
People and.
People come up your driveway, you have door to door people come to your house.
We've heard he does that.
Yeah, they come up and they talk about.
I had a door to door kid come up to us to try to sell me pest extermination services and it came on an electric scooter.
But my point is. We have to understand.
Alright.
Where we wanna get our energy from. And if we wanna take off, well, that's fine.
Oh, no, I I I was, Andrew is, it makes a valid point. I think. We should ask the question, should the town encourage use of wind power, yes or no? I don't think we need to drive it to all these other things.
I I I'd be interested in residential scale. Like, like little small, like maybe a hundred foot tall little tower. Before America got electrified, there was all those Sears and Roebuck would sell little.
Oh, no, I think they're great, I think, I think micro wind is amazing, I just don't like macro wind.
So that's sort of, that's where you you notice the skill that was in this question. I have large industrial scale, multiple towers. Small industrial scale, one to three towers and residential scale.
Okay. Skill, he's got the skill. Alright.
Okay, same as solar.
Same as solar.
Same as solar.
Yeah.
Um, I had a question with the solar. Don't know where my note went, but, um. Do we want to ask the question of should it be? Only on rooftops? Or on the ground?
Solar?
Yeah.
Oh. I kinda like it on.
Okay, so we could, so so residential scale less than fifty panels. Which. Like, that's a really big roof, or we could have, um. Make another question here, so.
Could be on a variety of roofs.
Don't you need an active fifty permit to make more than fifteen, to put in more than fifteen kilowatts worth of pounds? That's what I was told. Anything past fifteen kilowatts, which is forty forty. Pounds, you have to be an active.
That's a, that's a good point, so what we can do is say residential scale and that's not panels. It's it's the power, I'll I'll find that, I I know who to call. I'll find out the power, okay? And then we can say only on rooftops. Uh. So I I guess, why why would you be? Why would we wanna know, if if someone can have residential power, why why do we care whether it's on the roof or on a, on a little pileup?
I asked that question.
Okay, why why would we care?
Well, propland has been used up for this. And do.
Yeah.
We using, if we're looking at maintaining our rural character.
Yeah.
I think that that has an impact on that. And if it's on a roof, it's certainly. Not as impactful.
Okay, so for the residential. It could be ground or roof because it's not much power. But you're suggesting, um, we don't really even have any big buildings.
No, like Lawson's put it all on that, they made the parking.
I think that's, I think, I think solar parking is great.
Yeah.
I think turning parking lots into solar fields is an amazing thing, especially with a good car chart or something.
On uh, commercial roofs. Roofs or parking here, that that's good. You know what the uh, folks are working on? Is doing it for roads.
Yeah, cause some countries doing that.
Yeah, there's some experimentation about doing it in roads. Okay, so I think large industrial scale over a thousand panels. I I should take out the panels. But I left the panels in there because it. People know panels, they don't know megawatts.
Yeah, I agree.
I like panels.
And I will put the mega waters in there. My my system is of. Five to six megawatts and it's twelve thousand eight hundred pounds. And the the state, there's a difference between five megawatts and under. There are three classes.
And you're how many megawatts?
The biggest that we could get in the middle class. Yeah. So it'd be like. Small industrial.
You're in the meth area.
We've put now enough power for a thousand houses.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, that's pretty good. And the neighbors are very okay with it. And the school system is very okay.
Sure. I mean, I always thought that at the high school. We should have put it on the roofs.
That would be a great place to have it, that's a large area.
And it is the largest energy user that Washington Electric has.
That would be really good to have it, so I agree with you, commercial roofs. And a carports, uh. Parking areas, that's that's a great place, having on a parking area is really good because it helps the cars keep cool.
Keeps the snow off.
Yeah, so it's a very, very good deal, yeah, I agree with you. Okay, so then the next question. Um, is alternative energy systems, do you currently have it, are you planning to install it, should the town plan encourage new construction? And that's like. To give a building permit. Like, do you need to have solar panels as an example? Or or one of these alternative things? Okay, then recreation, um, what types of recreation do you participate in? And I basically took, but was there, I think I. I separated out outdoor swimming and indoor lap swimming. And faced in M R V and outside the M R V. I think I'll put a few others in there too.
Where can you indoor lap swim in facing?
You can't.
Okay, sure.
And third, the closest is, um, stone.
Well, you can do it at the Sugar Bush.
On a lap pool.
No, you have to go to stone.
Oh, like, oh, I'm sorry, so now we like, our standards are, it has to be fifty yards minimum or?
No, I think that they have lanes in the morning. You can go to stone and I think they'll have it at one of the gyms in Montpelier.
Did, yeah, there there's also one in Berlin.
That's I mean, Berlin.
Also like, like hardcore laps, not like going to the Sugar Bush outdoor pool.
Yeah, not fooling around, fool.
Yeah. This is where people get exercise, I mean, this is serious, I mean, it's the equivalent of mountain biking, a revolution.
I wasn't a swim team.
You were?
Oh, yeah.
I can swim across the whole length of my pool.
I I I I I need a wet suit, I I get cold. But I think it's important to know is in facing, other towns or outside the M R V, you gotta go to for each of those.
Okay.
And then how important to you is the availability of following types of recreation, same deal? Cause some people will know who wants what. And then.
Right, which le- it leaves us with the indoor lap swimming, do we want a facility?
Yeah, and and and. Exactly.
Behind a face is cool.
Down by the stadium.
Or that that would be one place, or. I mean, I have no idea about the commercial aspects of this, but. I mean, Sugar Bush has a wonderful facility, they can attract a lot of people, they're trying to have a year round. Recreation at Sugar Bush. You know, could we partner up with them and have a a pool there?
It's very expensive.
Um. Yeah, 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 I mean, you could, you could go to stone, it's quite nice.
Make sure I put that in the, in the minutes. Anyway.
In fifty two, I kind of reworded a little bit because. Um, it was kind of negative in the in the thing saying, you know, people have been adversely affected, but I think sometimes. Um, if you, if the D R B requires new trails put in as part of the. The requirement for subdivision, that can be helpful.
Was?
Fifty two.
Yes.
Fifty two used to say. Over the past five years, how does new development, recent land postings directly impacted the recreational? Activities you and your household participate in? And you changed it to have the following impacted your. Recreation, yes positively, yes negatively, no. Fair enough.
They got the word trails in there.
So, yeah.
Okay. Then fifty three, new development, that was, yeah, that was the same. Is is there fifty three? The.
Are you on fifty three still?
Big town encouraged new development too.
Yeah.
I would just say in new development. In the answers instead of in subdivisions. There's other types of new development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm curious to know how many new subdivisions have been permitted in. Facing in twenty twenty five.
But there's oftentimes. One parcel being subdivided into two, or some, if you, I'd like to know the number two.
But when I think of subdivisions, I think about like you take one tract of property and turn it into like six or seven buildings.
That's a P U D, right?
Depending on the size of lots.
The. I used to think that. But a subdivision is just taking one parcel and 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 making. Two or more.
Oh, I'm just telling you. When I say that word, that's what I think.
Yes.
And you're talking about something. Different, I'm saying that's how I visualize it.
Me too.
I just. When I, when you talk about a subdivision, that's taking a large piece of property and putting in multiple building.
Yes.
When someone de- divides their property to sell off half of it for another house to be built.
That's also a sub.
It is also a subdivision, but that's not. The subdivision that requires trails. That's the, someone has a big piece of property. They want some that they want their. Mother-in-law's building house or whatever.
Let's just say, then let us say that. There is a trail. And it goes to a pro- goes by a property. And then when that person. Who's unrelated to the trail. Does a subdivision, let's just say divided into. Should there be a requirement, ah, there's a trail here, let's connect that trail to another trail. Should that be a requirement?
To force people to let people on their property?
Purging it versus. Forcing it.
When they subdivided the Ward lumber company property that I currently live on. There was deed restriction placed to my deed that that allows for a twenty-foot path, it within twenty feet of the high watermark of the Shepherd Brook. It provides fishing access, a trail for public access along. The Shepherd Brook on my property. And that was in the deed.
So I think I think Freddie's right, it's it's encouraged, not forced. We don't wanna force anybody to do it. But I think encouraging. Well, maybe it's not because nobody really wants more trails. We'll find out what happens with other questions. This question is basically saying, do we want to? Encourage people to do it, I mean, I'm.
We're talking about fifty-two or fifty-three? Fifty-three, should the town face and.
I I think the three options are good. We just changed the word subdivisions to new development.
So it would be provide for paths and trails in new development, maintain access to existing trails when in new development, encourage lenders to build connecting trails to neighborhood trails.
Yep, okay, I could do that.
Cool.
And then. There was a surveys, there's been surveys done before that people. Have said they wanted um an indoor excellent recreation center, I don't know. But um. Would you use it? I mean, I think I think, I'm not trying to tell a commercial enterprise what to do, but if. You know, it'd be nice if we could find a partner to do something that gave. I mean, we talked about Sugar Bush, I don't know, I have to talk to, I don't, I don't know, I'm. I don't know whether it's prudent. I shouldn't tell anybody what to do commercially, but it'd be really nice if we had a. Indoor recreation. It means the 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 high school could have a swim team.
We don't have enough kids to field all the sports that we've got.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point too.
So like. Like of. A valley recreation center? Because like, they were talking about putting a teen center in in the large warehouse that's behind neck of the woods that used to belong to Small Dog Electronics. But now it's apparently just being rented to a carpenter. You know, but that's a large building that could have been retrofitted as a teen center and given kids a place to go.
Teen center called teen.
You know.
But I think he bought.
Who did?
I think New School. Bought Pomerance's old space.
I'm not talking about that, so. This is Small Dog Electronics, then there's a warehouse down here, you drive down the lower driveway. It's where um there's a construction company, keeps a bunch of, keeps on a bunch of.
Where's this on one hundred?
Yeah, so Meadow Road.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You drive in the neck of the driveway and you make the left turn to the employee parking lot and down there is a large, it's it's, you know, pretty big steel building. And they were gonna think about putting a teen center down there, but neck of the woods, there's the steering committee, they own it. That might be something in the future.
Yeah, teen center, yeah, that's another possibility. So I mean, would would you use it?
Yeah, I mean.
Needs to have more things than.
That is the pickleball. Indoor bouldering.
Indoor bouldering, but that's what, that's at the shark. I mean, we've got bouldering at the shark, we've got tennis at the shark.
I mean, it's nice to know that what people are looking to do there.
So this question you.
Or you'd say, what would you like to see? Would you, are you interested in an indoor recreation center? What sports would you? Like to see?
Other please list. I'd love to partner with with Sugar Bush on this. Um I think it'll be a win-win for. Everybody.
So that was. Oh, so you passed that.
Now the new one, the the that was a new question. Now the next question is. Uh spending. And I I find this. Subjective the way it was written. So I I try to get it more objective. Okay, this this way the people can just can say, this is real money now. You're not just saying, oh, yeah, we want more land conservation, we want more trails or do it. How much you really wanna spend on that?
But I think you've gotta ask the question first is should the town spend?
We're looking for zero.
They don't wanna.
That's 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 exactly what I would expect people to say, zero, 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 zero. You don't think that's the government's business.
The only one I would add is disaster recovery. Who's gonna pay for the bridges?
So that was a question that you asked long ago and I pooh-poohed about the MOUs. That they were forcing.
Who is forcing?
Um CBD.
Oh, central of what?
You remember, do you remember reporting to us about that?
I remember we talked about the our temporary bridges.
Nope, this is when you first got on there and they were pushing for all the departments to have MOUs.
Oh, to share equipment and stuff after disasters.
Well, you know why? Actually, what the basis is. Because if you don't have that in place, FEMA doesn't reimburse it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we didn't.
I think it was state statute too that came down there.
Yeah, I'm sure, but that was the communication. Avenue, but that's why. I thought that was a good thing to know.
So um I just kind of just copied. That one, that it used to be forty-nine. Or fifty-four on the original one. And forty-nine on on Andrews, I just copied it down and I'm not so sure these are the the right things. I think land conservation. I don't know how you would do that when it's private land.
Well, the town can buy land.
Town could buy, yeah, yeah.
They could buy the development rights from someone. I don't know, I'm making stuff up.
Yeah, that's true. Trail networks, senior services, arts, police, traffic. I don't know what energy is, is that energy conservation? Improvements?
Did the town provide financial support? The original question, yeah, should the town provide financial support for en- energy conservation?
And I'm saying how much annually, and and it should be zero if it's not.
Well, so like, let's say the town decided to. Help subsidize people to insulate their homes, that they wanted to do like a cellulose blown in insulation, so they hire some company to put in and do like. Thirty-five houses, like people sign up and it's like a group buy for cellular, you know, blown in cellulose, right? So the town would develop it, the town would sort of subsidize it, put it together, put a plan together, that would be.
That would be energy.
That would be energy conservation.
Yeah.
So you're looking to grow the staff?
What?
You're looking to grow staffing.
Someone's got to manage it.
I I he asked, what I just, I just went.
Okay, just.
He asked what energy conservation.
Subsidies somehow.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean affordable housing, I was the town's support of affordable housing. I don't know, you're gonna tell him because you have to, if they ask you, have to tell them you have. Healthcare.
That was in the question there before, yeah, whether it's like maybe perhaps subsidizing the building before, before um. Uh UVM pulled out of our building, the town and the other towns in the valley. Only get some money to make it more economic. But it's a rude question now, but.
We all paid money to build the building.
So I don't know, Freddie, you you might know through Ron what what the regional numbers are here, but I just. I think last time I read 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 the budget. Based on budget, there was a lot of relatively small numbers, like five thousand dollars, ten thousand, twenty thousand and. Yeah, I think so. So.
Thank you for your hard work, my home.
What's our budget, what's the basic town budget?
Um, question, do we wanna maintain the public transportation question in there with the mad bus? I think they discontinued it. Because there was no riding. Going on. And if they were gonna bring it back, they were gonna do it just from. Like the Irisville Common Area.
I used to run into people who would literally park their car. Down at like Shaw's and they would take the bus to Sugar Bush to ski and I was like, I was not.
You were confused?
You don't have to walk up.
I, listen, I know that I have like first world problems, but like it wasn't like, it was like during the week, like Wednesdays, when I was parking like front row at Sugar Bush. And it was just to avoid the wear and tear on their car to get from the valley to Sugar Bush is the answer after. So you're confused.
I think we leave public transportation X out and mad bus.
Yeah, public transportation, easy, the mad bus, not say mad bus.
And I realized. Knowing what I know, I have inside information. I didn't put down mad of a path.
Trail networks. I consider that somewhat covered under.
But that's it, should we like put specific things like the Mad Pal, Mad River Valley Planning District? You know, we pay into the League of Cities and Towns, we pay into Central Vermont Regional Planning.
How about all of the things we donate to? Get the town.
Yeah, I could I could do that. Yeah, I get the town. I have, I think I have the town budget somewhere.
Realistically, should those. Questions be asked without knowing what the budget of those entities?
I could put it down. I could put it down. Here's what it was in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, but what the what the town, what the balance sheet, what the. Is for each of those entities?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, like like, for example, the central Vermont Planning District, we put in eight thousand dollars a year, whatever it is.
It's eighteen hundred bucks.
Or whatever it is, but I could put those numbers down. And then give people an idea.
Right, but what's the balance sheet for those entities? See what I'm saying? So like the ambulance service, like what's their? Yeah, what do we give? Because you join as a, you know, member, and then they bill your insurance too. I'd like to know what they've got in store, cuz every nonprofit should have, I think it's a year. In reserve. After that, how much money do they got? Like, we just should have some more transparency. Lucid.
All right, I heard this story about a gentleman who called called the analyst's daughter to the hospital, she had a health problem. And he received, he's received a bill in the mouth for five hundred sixty-four dollars. So he called the analyst people and he's like, I don't think we have our health insurance, you know, here's our health insurance information, you know, sent this bill for five hundred sixty-four dollars. And like, yeah, great. So a week later, he gets a bill, it's for fourteen hundred dollars for the ambulance ride. And he calls me, he goes, I I don't understand. You sent me a bill, now this is another bill. It was, oh, yes, yes, that was, the first bill was you didn't have insurance, that was our no insurance discount, it was five hundred sixty dollars for the. The hospital, but once they found out you have insurance, the actual bill is thirty-five hundred, your insurance covered seventeen, your remaining dollars, you owe sixteen hundred. Or fourteen hundred, sixteen hundred. And he's like, oh, well, yeah, can we just forget I have insurance? Like, no, you were clearly covered on that day. What if I cancel my insurance? No, you were clearly covered on that day, you owe us fourteen hundred dollars.
This is the US healthcare system.
And it's true.
It's a disease disease care system. We don't have health for it.
So if, so we. We have bought the people that don't have health insurance to get them to the hospital, but then if they do have the insurance. We we charge them what actually costs.
Yeah, the hospitals do the same thing.
Yep, I went for an MRI. I was shopping around. And it was like fifteen hundred, two grand for the MRI. I says, God, that's a lot of money. He says, yeah, you got a good insurance, so you cover as well. I says, yeah, so I said, what would it have cost if I didn't have insurance?
Two hundred bucks.
Eight hundred and something dollars. Would you kidding me? In the same conversation, no, we know you have insurance, you can't go that way. So, yeah, the system is.
Carry catastrophic policies.
And you look at the 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 cost of our prescription meds in America compared to other countries. And it's sign- generally significantly higher for the same meds.
Are we done our meeting?
We are done with the survey and and the action item. I will type this up and then hand it over to Andrew. Who will then magically do some HTML coding.
And I'm more than willing to work with you or.
I'll take it first crack at it.
Yeah, I just think, I think if we can put an actual survey in front of everyone, then we can really start working on it together and get a really good product. So. When I, so that's stated in it. So now we can talk about the direction of the towns.
I think we should think about that one for next time.
So there's. Multiple ways to raise money, right? Uh you're familiar with local option tax?
Yeah, I don't think we've got, we can't get into this three hours in, we're not gonna.
Dude, I asked to do this first. I just wanted to have ten minutes of conversation. The last time all we did was talk about this survey, okay? I just wanna talk about.
Local option tax?
I wanna talk about putting other questions on the survey that are not. Okay, planning commission associated to add to the questions. And it's something like, you know, we have. We've had a lot of problems in the last couple of years with flooding and stuff like that, and the town had to spend a lot of money and.
I think you should.
I understand you start support, but like. It, do you think that it makes, I think it makes sense for us to put questions that support the Conservation Commission, to support the select board. And the direction of the town's going, cuz that's what this town survey is, right? So what are those, like? Outside of just like straight up planning questions, you know, the planning commission questions, it's like, like. The local option tax question was something that happened several years ago. I wasn't privy to it, I wasn't paying attention. But the problem that they had at that point was that it was like the whole town was getting together and then they wanted to have. One fund that then was deviated to a bunch of different people. Waste Fields currently needs to finance their wastewater system and they are probably going to put. Probably are definitely gonna put a local option tax on their ballot for town meeting day by themselves. To collect that money about seven hundred thousand dollars a year to get a local options tax in order to finance their wastewater system. The big expenses that the town of Facetown has.
It was all going to affordable housing, just a few short years ago.
But the big problems that the town of Facetown currently has, and you can ask the select board about it, is our town garage needs some work, that's fair, we need to put some money in there.
Bridge on Meadow Road.
The bridge on Meadow Road needs.
Oh, is that what, oh, yeah, I thought you were still talking about Waste Field.
No, no, I'm talking about us. So, so. Waste Field has their own expenses and they're gonna use a local options tax to do it. And I know that it didn't go over really well a couple of years ago, right? But like, if we could get a local options tax in Facetown and asking the people of Facetown if they. Think that's a good idea, it would be another revenue source that's not taxes, right?
Well, it is a tax.
But in the whole idea of a local options tax is that it's gonna hit the people that come here as tourists. More specifically in Warren at Sugar Bush and the short-term rentals and stuff like that, cuz that it all hits all.
As a small business owner who has to add that in to only people who have that in the towns. That I deliver goods in. I'm not a fan of it.
Yeah, in Waterbury, you have to do the one percent local option tax, right?
Defense. I mean, I have to go down through every town and go, okay, what town am I delivering to? Yeah, they have it. Nope, they don't. They get an extra one.
So, I mean, you know, we have some expenses coming up. Luckily, this, the. The select board's been doing a really good job in their budgeting and having money. I mean, they're buying a new, they're gonna buy a new loader this year, like they have some real, but there's. Uh it's also, you know, our taxes keep going up because of education and the select board keeps trying to keep their budget tight to try to. Lessen that impact on the people of Facetown, so, you know. They could use some money to do some other things or just have more money in the in the kitty to help, right? I mean, yes, we need to talk to the select board about it. But it it might be a good idea to ask the question about explaining what a local option tax is and seeing what the people of Facetown think about that. I don't know, I mean, like, what are the other, like, should we, should we reach out to Conservation Commission and find out if there's questions that they have about specific areas of the town? You know, stuff like that.
I can call Brian Littman's.
Yeah.
I'll call Brian.
And then you wanna put the section together on the local option tax?
I can work on that. Um, you know, I don't know if it's gonna go over that well, you know, but.
Well, the point is to find out.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, it, I just. And then, so, you know, if you look at the survey that we just went over, there were, they talked about. Um accessory dwelling units, they talked about cell phone towers, like where were that, where, is there another area that, you know, we edited this document, right? And there are sections. Are there other sections that we wanna look at?
I think that goes to the goals. And I think we have to review the goals and as we move forward, and I think those things should go into the town plan.
Yeah. So can we talk about goals at the next meeting before the survey?
Yeah, but work up the agenda.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I messed up and I put the backwards tonight. I tried to switch in during agenda modestations, but.
Nobody was listening.
For the homework, the homework set the agenda. In this particular time, the homework is only to fix the document, clean up what we just talked through. And then send it to Andrew.
Well, and we worked through what was in that. Well, and we worked through what was in that.
Yeah. Yeah, we're doing it.
We may add more after. So instead of shortening it, we may be making it longer.
All right, liaison report. So the matter of value claims, that's Paul Steele who's not here, and I didn't attend the meeting. Have you been to Central Vermont?
That was, we haven't met because.
It's been like two weeks.
Yeah, we last met for this on the twentieth.
Yeah.
Last one for that was the fourteenth, so nothing to.
You're gonna keep the report from Sam?
Um, no, I'm gonna get it back. I was got prepared for this.
Yeah.
It's yours, um. The. The matter of a path. So, we didn't get. A grant that we were hoping to get for the Warren area. But what we did get is some good advice, how to improve our application for next gen. Okay, so that was, so Misha is. Is. Happy to know what we didn't do as well as we did, as we could. And we're going to fix that that for our next application. There's a whole bunch of other grants that he's applying for. Uh, we have this advisory committee that has been going on for about a year. We're now closing it down. We're going into an implementation committee. And in this implementation committee, there's gonna be six groups. One is municipal, which is a representative from each of the five municipalities. Um, we already have some select board, like select board member from Warren, we have a select board member from. Um, uh, Moore Town. And then for Fiston, Jared and I are are here, are on it, so I heard, so that's, we're probably covered. Then we're gonna have another group that's gonna be regional, state and federal, working with different, um. Governmental agencies, and we need to know who's gonna be on them, but I know that we do have some state reps engaged. And then, you know, the third group would be landowners to kind of work through some of the negotiations with some key landowners that own. Land around the path. And then there's the group that we're doing for, we need for a funding group to kind of. Work on supporting grants, foundations and community fundraising efforts, because we. We don't really have money to do much construction right now. And then there's another group, fifth one, which is outreach, communication, education, which is kind of what I'm doing right now, just communicating the project in and outside the valley. Um, and. And then there's a sixth group, which is engineering and design. And I'd like to be on that because I I like engineering. And it's kind of being an interface with the designers and the engineers that are be working on it. So we're gonna have, we're changing from the advisory. Committee to implementation committee with subgroups. And those are the groups that we have articulated. They had a really nice bike ride. Um, I I I got a report from Candace White. Um, they, she had a whole bunch of people from the state that came in October two. And. They started from Warren, and it was a really nice day. It's a beautiful day. And. It was really nice that there was an awful lot of activity on the roads. The silage wagons and trucks were going full speed, so, um, there's a lot of, um. Eighteen wheelers going up and down and and dump trucks and things, so it gave the the state people. An idea of why we really need to have a dedicated path that's separate from Route one hundred. And, uh, but it went well, so. Yes. Um, all I have to offer, I think our next meeting is gonna be December third, which is just a couple of weeks. Yeah, and and we we need them because that's where a, that's work and jobs, et cetera, in our community and. Beautiful land, but it helps the the state. Transportation people to realize why we. Don't wanna have just. A wider, a wider than shoulder to ride or bike something.
I hope that we adjourn.
Well, we have other business announcements on the journey. Uh, I'll be here on Wednesday, or any of you guys here on Wednesday.
Uh, what time is it? Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I Chuck emailed me during the meeting, I'm gonna meet with him here at five thirty, uh. In our public meetings. What what do you, I'm just, as a round table, like, what do you think the best way to control? Public comment, like those guys, the select board, they're no joke, right? Like, how we, how do we keep it simple?
I don't think it's up to us.
No, I mean, I Chuck and I are gonna, I'm I'm gonna. I'm asking, oh no, he said, hey, are you gonna be there to explain stuff? And I said, yeah, and I said, I'm more than willing to chat with you on the best way to. Try to like, keep it productive. And I'm asking you guys, like, based on being in the meeting and being with people like. Do you, do you, do you think it involves a microphone and a, but like, how can we do it? Because it went sideways.
Yeah, you gotta set it up like a real meeting with Washington Burlington City Council meeting.
Okay.
And just one person comes up to the stand and talks. The councilors just accept the public comment. Rarely the last follow up question. Needed, but you just kind of kind of accept the public comment and then move on.
Yeah.
You know.
Might want to pick a different town as an example.
No, it's a good example because it's crazy. You gotta love these things. It's insane. I mean, it's, you get way crazier panels in Burlington. They handle it, I mean, you just listen to the public comment and then obviously like take it in, take notes.
I think, I think what happened is there was more than just the speaker here. We had people in the background.
Yeah, well, somebody's gotta call it to order then.
Yeah, so that, I think that's the key.
It's not, I mean, it's not, I'm not the chair of the site, obviously. Chuck, I just wanna give them the best advice.
Fast for advice and what we're saying is. Controlling the background. Out of turn comments is probably important.
Cause they're just basically putting out for public comment, then they're gonna vote on it, like, it's not, nothing's gonna change, so.
Well, if they're gonna, if they're putting up a public comment, that means they're gonna ask the people, so the people come up.
Yeah.
And they give their opinion. And other people who are. Not on the call or not at, not in the chair should not have the right to disrupt the conversation.
Yeah.
And you're not editing anything. It's just yes or no of the vote, so.
Yeah.
Right, hopefully it stays on track more.
Yeah, so you got it, but you'll be here on, you'll obviously be here, you're gonna be here.
I'll be there, I'll try, I'm not, I sure.
It, there's, yeah, I.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what people say.
Um, and then as far as their next. All right, we normally meet the second Monday of every month, that would be December eighth. Does anyone have any conflicts on December eighth? My wife does have a work Christmas party that I found out about today, but I'm not. Derail the planning commission to go to a party with my wife. But if anyone else had a conflict, then.
What do you do with your kids when you both have a meeting?
Yes, babysitter. It's her, it's her yearly holiday party, which they like waited until the last possible minute to.
So you can get babysitting.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we both have meetings on Wednesday.
So in January, do we wanna start moving twice a month?
I, I would. Yeah, I mean, if that's what.
I don't know if we're gonna have that survey done and ready for town meeting.
I don't think we can get it. It out and receive before town meeting, I think we can.
Oh, it won't be back. We're gonna, we're probably gonna feel for.
I can't, I can't wait until December seventh, December.
Which is the way, like the next month's agenda could come to us sooner.
Sure, what do you want on the agenda? I write it.
I know, but when it comes, like, I didn't have email last week.
Okay.
And then all of a sudden, they'd all come in and then would have no emails.
So, um, I tell you what the agenda is gonna say next month, it's gonna say, follow the order. Public comments, it's gonna be, and then it's gonna be discussed. The goals from the previous document and goals going forward and possible. Where the town's going, and then it's gonna be Andrew's presentation of the updated town survey. And then it'll be liaison reports, other business adjourn.
And should we have homework that we review X number of sections of the town plan and then?
That'd be excellent.
So that we all come together having just read.
Yes.
Forest reserve or whatever that's is.
Yes, I like that.
So that we're together about that and we have an understanding.
Yes, I would hate for me to read section three, you to do five, and you did seven, he to do nine, and for, you know, we don't, we're talking about each other.
And that, if it was all on an agenda that came out to us, we'd all remember this.
Okay, I should tweak the goals in that first section to more specific.
Printed out there somewhere.
So Fiston Town Plan, chapter one is introduction, two is the history and historic resources. We don't need to talk about that.
Basin Town Plan Goals, Objectives and Strategies, is this?
That's what I wanted to go over tonight.
Just this document.
I wanted to talk about that tonight.
And, and that required us to read some chapters.
Well, it's, I mean, I know that, you know, we used to have meetings far later than this, but, um. We, we used to have, like. Some of these are just like. Increase the understanding, where is the basis to short settling patterns and developing.
Langford, I remember this conversation. I made a proposal and went nowhere.
What's that?
I think the way to do this, which is, how many bloody pages?
A lot.
Twenty one pages is to mark down in each of these a number. Four is complete. Three, measurable progress is made, there's a champion leading the effort. Two, some progress made, champion leading the effort. One, some progress made but no leader, zero, little or no progress made, no leader. And I think we need to put down on these and 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 see what's happened. Over the last five years that this was done, on all these, because these might just be aspirational. And it's zero, literal no progress has been made, there's no leader, why are we even doing this? Um.
So, Michael, I can tell you that when I got on the board, there was nothing going on. We didn't really do anything and.
Those are aspirational.
And so I think that in theory, you finish the town plan and the L U R revisions, and then you start on these goals. Is how this is supposed to work and move you forward. But if you don't look at that and don't do anything in between, nothing happens, and I think that's what we've done.
And it's twenty one pages here.
Yeah.
You know, like, I'm, I just pop open to page nine and, like. Consider identifying forest ownership patterns for parcels of fifty, less than fifty acres. Determine what management plans are in place, educate regarding connectivity issues and so forth. Wow, that's work. Okay, and it gets at the essence of my personalization question.
Exactly.
But is anybody doing this?
No. But.
Identify the town's most productive forest lands and promote sustainable silver culture practice as then, nobody's came to talk to me about that.
No, but this is where I think, um, we should be engaging with the select board. There's a section on roads in that. We should be talking to them, we should be talking to the Historical Society about the history. And if that's gonna be rewritten for the town plan, would they be interested in working on that?
Yeah.
Um, and I know they've got a meeting on the sixteenth I'm planning to go to.
Sixteen?
Yep. Um, Zelda's gonna lead us through at three o'clock, and then at four o'clock, we've got a meeting.
I'm sorry, so is the public invited at three o'clock or four o'clock?
Well, if you wanna see what Zelda's got to say.
That's the sixteenth of November in this building.
Yeah.
At three P M.
Yep, that's Sunday.
And then there's another meeting.
Well, and then at four o'clock is the official Historical Society meeting. They love to have people here, but we should meet with the Conservation Commission, we should meet, and they may be. The people who lead certain sections of this for us, and they may be the champions.
Yeah, so. Certainly, objective one, understanding, increase understanding, where does it faces historic settlement patterns and development. Strategy, support the face of historical society's efforts. And but maybe they. Answer those, but I still think we need to know. On each of these. Has there been, are they?
No, there's been nothing done.
For everything. So, then I think if that's the case, the twenty one pages needs to be cut down to one page. One page of objectives that we can go and steward.
So this, these are the words of the people before us, right? So I wanted to go over the words of the people before us to see if we align with any of these, and then, yes, disseminate it down to one page of our goals and objectives.
And that we're gonna actually work on it. By the way, actually, effective four on page two, it says. Uh, design land subdivisions to minimize development on high elevation about fifteen hundred feet.
Fifteen hundred, okay.
So that the fifteen hundred came out of that.
So.
So that's our homework, to go over this next time?
Is it this or we, or read the plan? Yeah, we need to know, what what is the homework design?
That's what we're working on right now.
Right, so that way, if you came out with the agenda and it had our homework listed in it.
Cause like, the thing I put on the agenda of this was to go over this and then develop new plans going forward.
We gotta do homework before that, we can't just, I mean, that's gonna be totally unproductive if we come in without reading it.
No, I, I, what I'm saying is, like, that's.
Yeah.
So, what I would like to do is, I would like everyone to. Read and be familiar with this document, which is the goals and objectives that the previous town plan had in them. And then I want you to go through and decide which ones you align with, and then when we sit down, we can have an educated discussion about this document.
So to be crystal clear, read this document and it's, which ones do we support? Which ones don't we support?
It just, 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 like, I've tried to read it, I've read a lot of it. It, a lot of it is pie in the sky ideas. I mean, if you've read it and just where, like.
Where does rubber meet the road on?
Where does rubber meet the road on this? And then there has been some talk about reading some part of the town plan, right?
But reading some of the town plan would help align some of this stuff.
Yeah, so.
And changes in like act two fifty and some of these other things will affect that and our town plan.
Yeah, so I read like.
But we've got a lot of homework to do to really go deep.
I read eighty percent of the town plan before my interview to join.
But do you understand and remember everything you read?
No.
Okay.
I, I don't. I read, but I don't think that we. I think that when it comes to the introduction and the historic and historic resources, I don't think that's something that we really, that's. That's the Historic Society and, you know, you can.
And we can't change that.
We can't change that, right? Michael's talking about like facing psychology, which is chapter three, the community profile is chapter four, so. Do we wanna go over a chapter or two chapters to the next meeting? Do we wanna know this document? And then maybe go over one or two chapters?
I'm just curious what this even is.
I mean, at the end of every single chapter, there are the goals and objectives. And strategies at the end of each chapter, this is.
These are just pulled out from the.
They're literally pulled up from the town plan.
So if we said chapter three and chapter four and the associated goals. And then we've came prepared to discuss those.
You wanna do two, three, four, so that's gonna be, two is the historian, historic resources.
Yeah, I don't think we have to do two, because we can't change.
This, these are the, this is, this is all of two's goals and objectives, okay? Three is this, four is that much.
So maybe we just do three.
Five is very long.
We're just gonna discuss how we wanna change the goals. Cause we can't, we're not discussing ever changing the town plan yet.
I think we have to, I I I I struggle with. Having twenty one pages of goals and strategies and key objectives. I I I struggle with that.
I agree, but can, can we edit this without the, doing town plan first?
I think this gives us the background.
We have to create goals and objectives at the end of each chapter in our town plan when we rewrite it. These are the ones that they wrote, so in theory. They built a town plan.
Why do we have to have goals? Is that illegal? Is that a statutory requirement?
I think it's part of the. Um, state and having a town.
So if it's part of it. Um, does the state require anyone to actually implement it? Who's responsible?
Unclear about their town plan and what got approved and I don't know what it's about, though.
It's about the town plan that was approved and what's in it.
I just, I just wanna make somebody. I was planning on going through the town plan and taking all the goals and objectives from each chapter. To then bring to the meeting so we could look at the goals and objectives, and now I was told that this document already existed and it was handed to me, which I then handed to you.
That's great.
I, and. The whole goal is you build a town plan, you have goals and objectives, you work those goals and objectives, eight years later, you write another town plan. Hopefully you achieve some of them, some of them you need to still work on. So this is like our homework of what we have to do in town plan. That was created by another planning commission. So understanding that will then drive our. Town plan changes. Does that make sense?
Um, not really, cause, I mean. I don't know what comes first and I don't know. Who's dictated, are we supposed to be taking feedback? I mean, do we need to survey first to do any of this or? Are these ideas?
I think some of this can go into the survey. I think some of this can feed into the survey.
The survey is supposed to feed into these documents that we're making.
But I think it's a circle.
The survey results will feed into the document, but I think this. Like, so area that are unclear or we think we want public to input on things. Will feed into the survey and the results from the public will come on back. And help us to rewrite this. I think you know that is. But, but I don't understand how these are used. I'd like to know, Langford, if you could figure it out. How, who forced us to have goals, objectives and strategies and what is the? What is the expected outcome of having these? Who's supposed to do them?
Yeah.
What do you mean we? I never signed up for this. I never signed up to encourage the use of PRDs in order to maintain a balance between density and preservation. I don't even know what a PRD is.
The plan.
Plan.
A plan is, is a, a, a pod, yeah.
I never, I never signed up to encourage energy audits of existing residential, commercial, industrial buildings with the M R V P grant program. I haven't no idea what that is.
I mean, this is what planning commissions are designed to do. Our, our bylaws in our town plan.
Our, our town plan and our L U R should be directing this, but that's why we should be being.
In our select board funding and.
For five months.
Yeah, no, a year.
A year, okay. I started hanging out with you guys, you started talking about, you were finished the use of the meeting before, and then we talked about trends, okay? Like, you had a new, you have a new, um, everyone was new, everyone's trying to figure this out, nobody's.
Had a clue.
Nobody knew what they were doing, okay? I'm trying to steer the ship back on course. That's all I'm trying to do. Like, we're working on the town plan, their goals and objectives. We should probably look at their goals and objectives to figure out where they thought the town was going. This was, the select board approved this town plan with these goals and objectives. Did they read it? I don't know. That's not my business.
The people of the town approved it.
The people of the town approve this, so we have to look at these goals and objectives and say, are we hitting them? Are we not hitting them? Is this something that still applies to face in today? And then we look through this, we get a survey of like, hey, based on this, this is what we wanna do. Do you think this is a good idea? And then we get that back and then we make town plan and revisions to value ours.
So maybe we need to. Make a scorecard like you're doing.
So of some sort.
And see how we're doing, and then I think we should make a new list of goals and objectives for our updated town plan. So let's start with this.
Can we? But can we like, I understand that you guys wanna talk like one chapter and the other, but like, is it, is it unrealistic to just? Become familiar with this twenty-one page document and then maybe we just focus on three chapters of the next meeting? Is that fair? But like it. And it's like, it's exasperating because like, I don't, I don't, I'm trying to, I'm figuring.
None of us really know.
So many.
I, 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 so like.
Make it, like, Michael, are you okay with that? We're gonna have a review of that.
The twenty-one page document, super review, right? And then let's just think.
I, I don't understand what a super review is, to review twenty-one pages. Like, what's the work process?
You read it.
Okay, I can read, I can read twenty-one pages, yeah.
You can read it, everyone's read it.
And then do you have an opinion about it? Like, maybe you've got an opinion and we have a conversation.
Yeah, and then I, like, it, I would love, you said something, you have a four, four-point scale. Of, of each one.
Posed four-point scale, do we have a, somebody else has a different opinion?
You've done the work that I wish everyone had done.
Michael, let's start with that. Maybe submit that to all of us.
The scale.
This is the scale.
Yeah.
Well, I, I can't do it because we're not meeting.
We're in a meeting right now.
Right now, so while we do, it's, uh, let's just talk it through. I had. It was complete.
Complete.
Uh, it's, or measurable progress is made, there's a champion leading the effort. Some progress made but no leader. And little or no progress made, no leader. I had those things. But I'm hearing we may want something else. It could be a different scale that says, do we support this or not?
Or. Um, how much progress has been made? Is there someone leading it? Do we still support this?
Yes, so, so for, for any of them. So a complete is one, measurable progress made is a champion leading the effort, so someone's leading it somewhere, somewhere. Um, I, I saw one participate in the Intemad group, uh. Planning Central Vermont Planning Mission, that's what you're doing, so you're doing that. And Madre of Recreation, just I know some, I think Paul is doing it, so that's good. So measurable progress made and. And then little or no progress made, no leader, do we still support this? Okay?
So it's complete. Measurable progress.
With a champion leading the effort.
With a champion?
Somebody who's, it's not just happening organically by.
Well, but maybe some of it is based on our L U R implementation.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. So maybe, maybe it's measurable progress is made.
So it's completely.
And little or no progress made.
Do we?
Do we still support this? Those are, those are the three choices, right?
Yep.
So we put a, a, a zero, um, uh. A, a one and a two, so complete is two, one is measurable progress made. And zero is little no progress made, no leader, and then we have a subset, do we still support this? Yes or no?
So no some progress, just measurable process, complete, little or no progress, do we still support?
Yeah.
Cause if we still support it, but we've made no progress, we can take that on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, this is, like, the goals and objectives are really supposed to drive the work that we do.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
There's a lot of words in this twenty-one.
Yes.
And so we could simplify them as well.
Well, I think we'd simplify it when we remake the whole town plan.
Yeah.
But maybe not yet.
Right.
So we're gonna have three choices.
Well, just.
Measure of progress made, little no progress made, and then for that one, you have a, do we still support this? Yes or no? And we need to go through it all.
Yeah.
So.
So maybe that will take us a while.
To talk about them.
Well, we're gonna do it for homework and then talk about it.
Yeah.
Because some of it, we won't know. And we're gonna have to find out.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, here's a good one. Forbidden land development is still to twenty-five percent or greater. Strategies include appropriate language and faces land use regulations, so that's crystal clear. And I wonder if it's in there, I don't know.
We can all try to do our best to find out.
Yeah, okay, some of these we couldn't measure. Okay. So.
It's not.
Langford, I, I.
Supposed to get four inches of.
Oh my god, I should put my sweatpants on.
I don't know if this is gonna get us, uh, whether we're gonna have enough time to do the whole thing.
What?
I don't know if we have enough time to do the whole thing. I mean, I'm willing to donate. You know, a day to go through this, but I, I wonder about twenty-one pages and all the ref, research that needs to be done, whether.
Can we focus on? Uh, chapter six, which is housing and chapter five, which is land use? And chapter three, which is facing psychology.
What is for?
So it's community profile.
Check.
What?
And check what we're gonna do, put it in an agenda that you sent to us.
Yep.
Yeah, soon, so that we can do the homework. And it's in writing in front of us.
Uh huh, yep. Cause I don't know if we wanna do them in like order, or wanna do them in the ones that are like sort of broaden our view of what we're doing. Does that make sense? You don't, you hear what I'm saying?
I do. It would be nice since we don't have the maps. And I called them again.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous. And we only pay eighteen hundred bucks.
Cause it's.
I think we pay sixty-eight to Metrop.
So you think three chapters? We could do three chapters.
How about if we come prepared to do three and we'll. Focus on two with third being a bonus.
We just gotta keep on the rails.
Can we like, but can we like, can we put the survey in the, in the back burner for a little bit so we can?
Sure.
Like, figure stuff out with what we actually wanna do. I love the survey, don't get me wrong, it's.
I don't care how you personally feel about the survey, I'm not offended either way.
Hey, and you guys did a lot of work from the survey.
It was some work, it wasn't that incredible, I just.
The other thing is, we, we have to get back to the survey, but this may inform the survey with the questions that we wanna ask for.
Yeah, exactly, it's fun.
We need to target.
That's what I realized when I was doing it yesterday.
All right, what else we got? That's it, other business, so December eighth, that's, that's what we're doing. Fair? Any announcements? Can I get a move to adjourn? I second it, all in favor?
I.
All right.
And it wasn't cold in here. Thank you, Maddie.
I would like to know.